I'll have to, maybe I'll have to call.
Oh, no. I guess not.
Actually, we're spring, it's spring now. I will call the meeting to order for March twenty-fifth, two thousand nineteen, Lincoln County Board of Commissioners. If you'll join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. For correspondence this morning, we have the Board of Education, USD two ninety-eight. Dear Lincoln County Board of County Commissioners, the Board of Education USD two ninety-eight of Lincoln would like to invite you to participate in the superintendent's search process. Part of the search process being conducted by the Kansas Association of School Boards is to host a characteristic forum to give community members and patrons an opportunity for input. USD two ninety-eight will host the meeting on April first, two thousand nineteen. We are asking that you meet with Craig Wilford of Kansas Association of School Boards at the Finch Theater at one P M. What time is our interview done? One thirty? Twelve thirty. Lincoln City Council, Barnard City Council, Beverly City Council are also being invited to the session. The time spent, will be spent gathering insights and ideas about the desired traits and characteristics of our new superintendent. The session takes approximately forty-five minutes to complete. The questions will focus on current strengths of the district, challenges of the district, skills, traits, and qualities for the new superintendent. The information provided from staff, patrons, and community members will guide our school board as we move forward with the search. Please plan on attending if possible. We appreciate your help in this important task of selecting a new superintendent. Have they done that before?
Yeah, uh, yes, they, most of them have been private interviews.
Um, I guess that would be yours, and that would be yours. Um, street plumbing from Lincoln Park Manor, I have some bills here.
I think we had some of those last week.
Yeah, I was gonna say one more second. Okay, so, um, street, uh, street plumbing, a trap cleaner, a sink strainer, three hundred and twenty-five dollars in labor, and a sewer machine. Oh, we wanted to, I wrote on there though, we wanted to question that and see what, whether he's, Jonathan Schale is taking care of that kind of stuff or not.
Well, I think he can do some stuff, but some of us probably, more than he can handle, probably.
Two hundred and ten dollars and fifty-seven cents from Street for HBAC foil tape and labor. Are we proving that one? That was.
Painting. I think so.
Uh, it would be taping probably some ductwork, it looks like.
Yeah, they had to go in some ductwork, wasn't connected them in some rooms, they weren't getting heat, so that's obviously something he can't do. Street had to do that.
Um, the Ready Industries bill for another pumping of the grease trap. I, I feel that that should be a function of the, of the L C. Um, they're the ones creating the grease there. If you two, if you'd like to take a vote on it, now vote me, I will sign it.
Well, I just have a, we probably should, every week we kinda go through this on what we should pay for, what we shouldn't. We should probably have a list or define what is our responsibility for the building and what's their responsibility for the building. Cause there are things that are debatable, like you point out.
Mm-huh.
And, uh, you know, when you get small items, uh, I don't know, that's, we should maybe have a list so we can go down there, so we're not responsible. Because maybe we need to deal with Mr. Grace on that, on what we're not paying, what he's supposed to pay, I don't know.
So I'm gonna put that off to the side. This is the smoke detectors, I will sign that one. Nobody has any objections.
No, I, I think we just.
Batteries.
Yeah, I think we just sign them all.
I will sign for that. An entry lock. Um, I don't know what a modernization kit is, it's from Lincoln Building Supply, but the other thing they bought there were some, like a door, a door pin, an entry lock, so I think.
They were gonna get a new door outside, that one door that goes into the kitchen was cracked and it was falling apart on the side. They're gonna get that, that's coming.
Mesh tape and popcorn patch, that would be for the ceiling.
Okay.
And then, uh, this would also have to do with the ceiling to paint, I guess, where they, is that the leak, I assume?
Well, they're gonna have to redo, like ceiling tile was leaking through them and through some electrical outlets that they went through, and I think ruined some because it shorted them out. So they're gonna have that issue to deal with.
So. I'm just gonna make a note, structural renovations, I believe we're all in agreement that we will pay for those, if they're structural, to the actual fixed property.
Well, the roof leaks and then it comes down through these, inside of the, above the tile and below the roof, and is there, and then runs down pipes, wires, drips over here, drips over there, you know. So that needs to be fixed, yeah, obviously, and that's something we should, I know we're checking on insurance, but that needs to be done.
To at least preserve it, right?
That could be a violation by a health code and that, that you could get some big fine out of that. That needs to be fixed, yeah.
And I would say that's definitely structural. My, my one objection to the bills that we get, seem to get from them is that we're paying for their recurring maintenance costs that we would not otherwise be paying for if it wasn't for being a landlord, having a tenant. So when the tenant creates a cost, that needs to be dealt with by, by the tenant, in my opinion, so.
I agree, I agree too, but it depends on what it is. It all comes down to, obviously if they're gonna, if Jonathan can unplug a, plug a toilet, that's good, and he can, that's their deal. But if it's where it's really plugged and they can't get to it even with the snake, right, snake thing, then maybe Street has to come in, so every case is kinda different sometimes.
But, okay, so I'm, I'm specifically referring to this Ready Industries, they're billing us five hundred dollars quarterly, I believe.
What's that for?
That's for them to pump the grease trap, so.
Is it plugged up every month, or every?
Boy, it's not even plugged, it's just a routine.
Maintenance thing.
Right, and I would say that that should be the response. It's like, it's like having your hood cleaned in your kitchen, one time they sent us the bill for that, but my point is.
That should be a maintenance thing, by them.
Right, I, I mean, that's.
I could, I could kinda agree with you on that, if it's not a failure of some hardware that we have to deal with. If it's maintenance, like them cleaning floors every week, that's their job. But again, you're gonna have, you know, disagreements probably, what they're responsible for.
So we need to, we definitely need to look at our lease and, and maybe put an addendum in writing for that type of.
We may need to get very specific on what they pay for and what we pay for.
I agree.
I don't think it is, probably.
Okay, I have one more piece of correspondence. We did receive a legislative update Cindy Nelson brought from the Council on Aging. This is a letter from Sharon Doe. Dear Commissioners, I understand that you no longer have a road supervisor and that Mr. O'Hare has had too much work put on him. So I am volunteering to take one of the tablets and take pictures of the work that needs done and talk to taxpayers as to what they feel needs done in their areas. All I ask is mileage from my house and back, which is fifty-eight cents per mile, the state and the federal going rate. I will probably need some training on the mobile tablet, but I understand that you are already paying for that and that came with a program at no extra charge. I will drive every road in the county that is passable with my car. If the road is not passable, I will make note of that so you know. Then Mr. O'Hare can start to work unnecessary projects and it will all be in the system. All he will have to do is categorize the work and get the work started. I will take down comments from taxpayers and then when the work is done, go back and make sure they are satisfied with the job that was done. I will do this as my time allows. Thank you for your time, Sharon Doe. Thank you. It's a good idea. Um, I don't think you were here, but we actually got a brief overview of how that program works from Michael. He brought in his tablet to show us that.
Take pictures of it.
Yeah, and there's basically a touchscreen system where, you know, you can input a location, or you can type in.
Yeah, addresses, right.
Right, or just say it's a culvert, or this one's a bridge, or this one is.
Probably GPS on it, isn't it, when they go somewhere? Probably GPS, like on a smartphone, we have GPS.
Well.
And it, it should log then where you're at on the, with GPS, and then you could show, we've almost, I don't know if this does that.
I think what it is, have you seen the maps where you do a pin drop on the map? I think it's that type of system. I don't know that it has the GPS coordinates personally, but it has the map.
The map of where it is on the map.
I think that's what that program specifically does. I would like to consider that offer, that sounds interesting.
I'm not against her doing that, I think that's a nice offering, but shouldn't we have, we have twenty-five employees at the, I have a department. Somebody could be doing that now, that's employee working there. Maybe they're not being done, I don't know, but.
I have, I have to go.
Sure, sure.
Okay.
Um.
I better turn this down.
We do have twenty-six employees, I think, right now.
Yeah.
Maybe, well, we just lost one, so maybe we are down.
And I know that Michael's busy now, especially with Bob gone, and, uh, no, that's good, it's just, I'm not, don't, we should probably almost have somebody doing that, or, I guess we might be doing all the time.
Well, it either needs to be the.
The thing is, is if we do this, then does that set a priority that this is a list of stuff and then, uh, we prioritize them, that you gotta fix this, and this, and this, and this, and this order? Or are, are we gonna try, would that, would Michael think we're undermining him and, uh, going around him on doing something?
Well, no, that's.
You know, that's all.
That's his job.
Well, I know it's his job to do, fix the rubs, but.
No, but it's his job to prioritize the projects.
Right.
I mean, uh, if, if he can't do that, then we need to look at why.
I'm not, yeah, I'm not saying, it's just a, are you gonna do this forever now, or just for a month, or six months, or a year?
Whatever you want.
Okay. Well, I, I'm not necessarily against it. We should ask maybe Michael if he would, what's he thinking about it, cause he's gonna be dealing with her.
Well, and I think some of what we had seen is that, um, each, each person on their route has about a hundred miles. And so they are able to do that for their own route, but it hasn't necessarily.
They shouldn't be greater drivers, and they should spot a culvert that's collapsing, or a.
But they either need to be told to do that, or it needs to be done so that they can see it, and they can see where they are on the map.
I'm not saying, this is, this is, go ahead, yes.
Larry was talking to some of the greeter men and some of the guys that were in charge, and they said you couldn't get, that the, the tablet wouldn't go everywhere, that there's no.
GPS.
Well, no, um, cell service or whatever.
Well, without internet, that's internet service, which is GPS too.
But the program should hold the information until they get to where I, or.
So if they're at their outline shop, let's say, they could make some notes, and then when they go out, they have their own notebook, and then when they come back, if it takes them fifteen, twenty minutes at the end of the day, they could type in that.
They said that's why they won't use it, is because you can't get out with it anyway. And I said, well, once you put it in there, it'll go through, it's just like when you do a text, if you're in a place where there's no cell service, it'll go through once you get in a place.
You can always reset it.
Right. Right. And I think, um, some of that issue is also what, in conversations with Bob in the past, and then I just had a conversation with the secretary of the office. What's happening is when someone makes a phone call in from anywhere, we're sending someone to the, to the site without any tools, without any equipment, with nothing but their eyes. And then there's no log of what that is actually looking like at the site, except for that one person's contact. So whoever that may be, it was Bob before, so then we're sending someone out to the site, then we're bringing them back. If they get another call, then we're sending them to another site and we're bringing them back. So we have one person driving around to look at things without actually doing a documentation that anyone else can see.
And maybe making an analysis, eh, too, of what needs to be done and prioritize it. I'm not against this, I think it's a, we should tell Michael we're doing it, or.
Oh, yeah.
Or ask what he thinks of it. I don't wanna act like we're stepping on.
You're gonna stay for the meeting, right, so we can discuss this later.
As long as I can, yeah.
Okay.
I would just say I don't wanna act like we're stepping on his toes, you know?
No, I understand, yeah.
That's all.
Eddie doesn't have to decide it today, when it's coming out.
I appreciate the offer.
Yeah, Cindy.
You need to be careful about workman's comp, you're learning out county equipment, and it should be something.
She's in her own car, though.
I know, but it's something in writing, so that it's, it's something, if something happened, that county is protected.
Uh-huh, thank you.
All you require is mileage?
Yes.
Now we would have to deal with Dawn on how to deal with that, and you're not an employee, you're regularly, right, you're just one monthly.
And your tablet should tell when I start and when I stop.
And we'd have to give you the forty to use a county tablet, which is county, uh, hardware. Dawn, is it difficult to, uh, give mileage to a non-employee?
No, it's not, but it is something we'll have to double check with work comp as well.
Yeah, there you go, that's good, Cindy, thank you, work comp. That's, you know, Sharon, that's a good idea, it's just, we have to think of all these.
Right.
Deals, you know, everything that's involved in all this.
Yeah, and like I said, it doesn't have to be decided today.
Today, okay, well, maybe we'll think about it, let Dawn think about how it'd affect her, or, because, if you want mileage and all this stuff.
Let's bring it back up later in the meeting, and we'll, we'll discuss it then. I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes if you didn't have anything.
I'll approve the minutes from, uh, what date was that?
This is the tw- uh, eighteenth.
From before the eighteenth of March, two thousand nineteen.
Uh, second, I didn't see anything that needed correction.
It looked fine.
Okay, it's been motioned and seconded to approve the minutes from March eighteenth, two thousand nineteen. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. None opposed, and we will move on. We need to try to stick to our schedule today. Um, we have Brandon Cochran with the ambulance service, if you're ready.
I would like to wait until Mr. Wallace is present, is he coming back?
We don't know, he had to take a phone call and then he had to leave suddenly, so.
And he has to leave earlier today because of a medical issue, so we don't know his schedule.
Okay.
Today.
Sorry, I should've had these separated out, right?
Thank you.
What I'm here to talk to you about today is I'm here in an attempt at trying to help this commission, having a grave mistake that I've heard you talk about. Um, this mistake that I am here to talk to you about would be cutting the hours of current full-time employees of Lincoln County EMS Department. I have provided you with three documents today. I wanted to provide you with a fourth, uh, but I was unable to get on the internet on my computer in my office to come up with the, uh, Board of EMS regulation on staffing. Provided you with three documents today to hopefully give you a greater understanding of some things. The first document that I provided with you, for you, is the current poverty levels of the Continental United States in the District of Columbia, which would be titled ASPE at the top. If you look down, we have, uh, members of our staff that fall into the first four levels of poverty. As far as family members, they don't fall into that wage requirement. Now, I just wanted to let you know what those poverty levels are for family members, with that number of family members.
Um, I'm sorry, I, are you saying that we are to know that there's, there are employees that have a single income for their family that we're providing? And that, and that's all what you're basing that on?
All I'm telling you is what the poverty levels are for the District of Columbia in the United States.
But no, you said we have employees that fall into that, so I'm saying are we to discount the fact that they may have additional income in their family? I'm not sure how.
I'm not asking you to discount anything, I'm just trying to explain some things to you this morning, okay?
No, what you said was that we have employees that fall into that.
Are you gonna let me talk and finish my presentation?
I would like you to just clarify what you meant there.
None of them fall into those wage brackets, but they fall into the number of members of their family.
And you're not counting whether or not there's a spouse with an additional income for that total, to, to be a family of six with a total income of thirty-four thousand five hundred and ninety? What you're saying is we, the commission is not providing the thirty-four thousand five hundred and ninety for, for potentially someone who has a family of six.
I'm blocking off the, this part, I'm just telling you what the poverty levels are. I'm not saying any of our employees currently fall into poverty levels.
Oh, I thought, I thought that's what you said.
No, I'm saying.
Did anyone else hear that? I thought that's what you said, I'm sorry, go ahead.
What I'm saying is that our, our, members of our department fall into these numbers of household members. So, for example, Shiloh has three kids, she falls into the number four bracket. She does not fit into the, the poverty level as far as income, I'm just trying to give you some preemptive stuff and some other things I'm gonna talk about.
Okay, that's still a little confusing, but I, I think I understand what you were saying. You're just saying that we have people that have three and four members to their family household.
Exactly, that's all I'm saying.
But that doesn't correspond to the pay rate, is what you're saying, is the poverty.
If you would give me a chance to do my presentation, you'll see where I'm going with this. You're just not letting me get to that point.
Well, if I'm confused, I'm gonna ask you, I'm not just gonna assume that I understand you.
Okay. The second document that I'm providing to you is the Fair Labor Standard Act on overtime pay provisions for law enforcement and firefighter employees, because this has been brought up in a previous commission meeting about the hundred and seventy-one hour rule, so I'm providing that to you. If you would refer to, and you're more welcome to read the entire document, but the specific item that I want to point out to you is on the top paragraph on page three of that document. And it would be the second, third sentence in the paragraph, and I will read that. Uh, these are provisions of what falls into the two oh seven K exemptions, and that would be whether or not you can pay them at that hundred and seventy-one hour rate or two hundred and twelve hour rate within a twenty-day cycle. It says, "But employees whose primary job duties are the provision of emergency medical services do not qualify for the two oh seven K exemption unless they meet the statutory or regulatory definitions of either law enforcement officer or firefighter." And if you read in other parts of the document, we do not fall under that, we don't work under the fire department, we do not have arrest powers, so we do not fall underneath that. So, that two hundred and seventeen or two hundred, or two hundred and seventy-one or two hundred and twelve hour rule cannot be utilized for EMS in a twenty-eight day cycle. Does that make sense? The third document that I'm providing for you is, uh, what we, some of our employees are currently paid, uh, this is a spreadsheet that I made up myself. Um, the EMTs at the very top, at the current rate and hours that we are provided, they get thirteen thirty an hour. Uh, overtime rate would be nineteen ninety-five an hour. If they work forty hours a week, they get five hundred and thirty-two dollars for that forty hours. And, uh, overtime accumulates at a hundred and fifty-nine dollars and sixty cents in that, if they work eight hours of overtime. For a grand total for each week being six hundred and ninety-one dollars and sixty cents. Take that times fifty-two weeks in the year, their gross income without any additional overtime, just with their schedule, would be thirty-five thousand nine hundred and sixty-three. I'm not gonna go through every line here that specifically, I just wanted to start with the first one. Uh, AEMT is, is as follows, the same way that EMT was, just at a higher rate of pay. Um, if we were cut back to forty hours a week, that would eliminate any overtime, that would be the thirteen thirty, the five thirty-two a week. And that five thirty-two a week would equivalate to, uh, twenty-seven thousand six hundred and sixty-four dollars a year. So, with that being said, if you drop down to the little side bracket there on the right, uh, EMTs working forty hours a week would earn twenty-seven six sixty-four. Uh, at the forty-eight hours, they'd earn thirty-five nine sixty-three, which would be a loss of income of nine thou- or eight thousand two hundred and ninety-nine dollars and twenty cents. The AEMT is right below that, which would be a loss of nine thousand seventy-nine dollars and twenty cents. I've also heard the commission talk about, uh, increasing the rate of pay to accommodate for some of those losses. So I calculated below in this bracket in the middle of the page of what that would entail, if you was to increase it so we wouldn't lose any income. Um, that thirty-five thousand, which is thirty-five nine sixty-three, which is brought from the last column on the EMT at the top, divide that by two thousand eighty hours, which is what, forty hours a week times fifty-two weeks, uh, equivalents to, they would need to be paid seventeen dollars and twenty-nine cents an hour, which would now increase their overtime rate to twenty-five ninety-four. And the only reason I included the twenty-five ninety-four into there, um, was because now if you get called out anything above and beyond your forty hour week, then you're gonna be paying them at that rate, if you increase it to, so we don't lose any money. Uh, the AEMT, uh, it follows the same thing, that's brought from the last column on the AEMT on the forty-eight hour week, and divided that out. They would now need to be paid eighteen ninety-two an hour, which would make their overtime rate twenty-eight thirty-seven an hour. The reason that I showed you the poverty levels was because if you, and I'll use, uh, Shiloh as an example, because she does have a four-person family. If you cut her down to forty hours a week, that puts her at, uh, thirty thousand two hundred and sixty-four dollars a year, which is within about four thousand, a little bit more, of poverty level. That's why I brought the poverty level stuff, to, she pointed out to you, that that would drop her down within about four thousand dollars of poverty level.
Not into the poverty level, though.
Within poverty level.
Above poverty level.
Right.
Not within, but above it, not in it.
Within four thousand dollars of being in poverty, is what I'm saying.
Okay. Which includes about half of our employees.
Right.
Coming by, not just paying them.
I have spoke to several of the employees at the department, and if they were to lose that amount of income a year, the eight thousand two ninety-nine twenty to nine thousand zero seventy-nine twenty, they would be forced to, uh, look for employment elsewhere. Because they wouldn't be able to handle that cut in pay, because their lifestyle is built around what they've made and what they've, they've been making. Uh, I personally have invested a large portion of my life and personal funds into my career, i.e., I started at the bottom and I've worked my way up over the last twenty-five years. During this time, I have invested time, travel expenses, and even accumulated substantial student loan debt. I know that several other employees of the service have done similar things. I believe that you are getting the cart ahead of the horse, so to speak. And in my opinion, what we should be doing is finding a service director that we can trust to do the job. Uh, if you feel the budget needs to be cut, then task the director to do so. Uh, my fear of doing this is, and I spoke with Wendy, who was the previous director at the time of the twenty-four hour shifts going into effect, and, uh.
It happened under her, while she was there?
While she was the director. And, uh, the reason, she advised that, uh, there were months of discussion, it wasn't an immediate thing that they just jumped into prior to doing so, which included the commissioners at the, the time of that happening. And ultimately, the decision was made to do so due to not having enough coverage to cover the twenty-four hour shifts, uh, with volunteers and part-time staff that we had. Since that time, our numbers of staff, of volunteers, and part-time people has decreased since that went into effect. Sorry, I'm jumping around a little bit here. At that time, um, we even had a, a shift that we couldn't get covered, because everybody, all the part-time or volunteer employees were busy. Uh, and we didn't have full-time staff twenty-four hours a day at that time, and we had Ellsworth County come send two technicians up to man a truck within Lincoln County. When that truck, those two technicians from Ellsworth County showed up, one of the employees that they sent was a part-time employee from Lincoln County. The reason that she was not able to cover here is because she was working there, which ended up causing her to come work here. So she was being paid by another county to do so. I just wanted to put some light on some of the things that you're talking about and the potential of loss within the department that we could have uh, if wages were cut so dramatically.
Well, I don't think we've totally decided yet what we're gonna do with wages. We've discussed it, but I don't think we've decided that for sure, based on getting the director and going from there on. We have overtime, how much overtime, maybe done, maybe maybe some overtime that's maybe cut back from what we have. We're trying to save money, and that's what it comes down to.
I'd have to put some numbers to it, but I think what what would eventually happen is you're gonna end up costing the county money by doing this, because now you're gonna have to have multiple, multiple part-time employees, which your policy now is if you have a part-time employee, that if they get so much uh leave time if they work that month. So, part-time employees are accumulating four hours a month, is that correct?
Not necessarily. They have to work half the available hours. So, if they only take two shifts a month, then they're not.
They're not accumulating any leave time? If they're not doing.
And by two shifts.
That a full-time person would do.
So, if there's a hundred, this month, there's a hundred and sixty hours. If you had somebody that worked eighty hours, then they would, eighty hours, then they would accumulate.
Okay.
So, it's half the working hours available.
And I was not aware of that. I was not aware. The other thing that that worries me is, I've heard a little bit about maybe the schedule that you're proposing of having one employee, but I'll use Shiloh and Jerry as an example. They work uh two twenty-four hour shifts together. The way I understand it, you're proposing that like, say Jerry worked a twenty-four hour shift on his Monday with the director for that eight hours, and that the Shiloh would come in after the director got off and work the night shift for sixteen. Well, the way that our schedule rotates, and I assume you're not asking the director to work seven days a week. Or I would, I would hope that you're not. When you work Monday, now you work Saturday, is your second day in the week. So, now Jerry's gonna get his pull forty-eight in, because there's not somebody there to work the first half of that first eight hours of his shift. But Shiloh would only get her the twenty-four plus sixteen would be forty. And every one of our weeks, with the exception of one in a three-day, three-week cycle, is that way. You work one day during the week and one day on the weekend, with the exception of the week that we work Tuesday, Friday. So, you're really only going to be saving eight hours every three weeks for each employee and creating a severe scheduling nightmare to do so. Or you're gonna have to have a part-time employee come in and work that eight hours on the weekend. Well, I can tell you right now, the current part-time employees we've got, because they work elsewhere as a full-time EMT someplace, they only work the Wednesdays, they do not want to work weekends. They they work a similar schedule than that we've got, and they get one weekend off every three weeks, and they don't wanna utilize that weekend off coming to work for another department.
Well, in the interest of time, I I think there's a lot to be discussed there. But what I'm gonna say is, you kinda mentioned getting the cart before the horse. I think you're worried about something that has not been instituted yet, and we are in the process of.
Well, the whole department's in a panic because of the discussion that you've been having during your meetings.
Well, it looks to me like maybe they're in a panic, because you brought the information back, because I've actually never discussed.
This information is.
Man, I watched this on the videos. I actually brought this information to him, because he doesn't watch the videos. I watch the videos. And based on, just me personally, based on me losing all of that overtime, that's seven hundred dollars a month. That is my house and car payment combined. Now, I am going to have to go get a third job to put food on the table for my children.
Okay, but you're acting as if this has already happened.
No, I'm just saying.
Yes.
That there's a potential for it, and so I have to plan, because I have three kids to plan for.
It's just like an emergency situation, you plan ahead of time for what's gonna happen. If we know a tornado is coming.
Right.
We don't wait for the tornado to hit and then decide what we're gonna do.
Oh, I totally, I totally understand that. But this is not something that has been decided, we don't even have a new director yet.
I understand.
What we've talked about is the fact that this particular department spends almost fifty-two thousand dollars a year in overtime.
I understand that.
Okay, that's what we've talked about. We've also talked about the fact that other EMS departments either pay a sleep rate if they're doing twenty-four hour shifts, which is not full-time pay for sleep hours. Or they don't do the twenty-four hour shift so that, because right now, we have at least six employees that are guaranteed eight hours of overtime every week. That's almost a thousand dollars a week that we pay out for overtime. And and we are in a small county. And some of what's happening to our budget is that we're mimicking larger counties with our policies and our, and what we're putting out and what we're putting forth. That's not necessarily how other counties that are more comparable to ours do it. Um, I've given the example several times, I believe Greeley County, um, I don't wanna misspeak, but it's it's one way out there in the West. Their emergency manager is actually their EMS department head as well. And I'm not sure if he's taking ambulance shifts, but the point is, they have two positions for one person that's working that eight-hour day. Because things don't always happen. I know you're in an emergency department where everyone needs to be ready to go when it does happen. But when it's not happening, we're still over, we're still footing that overtime bill.
But I just, I just, I'm coming to you as a concerned employee.
I understand that.
Because now I'm going to have to get a second or third job. You are no, because I am out of county or working another job that I can't leave, now you're gonna have a backup issue, you're gonna have a second call crew issue, because I'm not gonna be able to respond to those calls, because I now have a second job. Or, well, actually, a third job. And and when I'm on my job, I'm concerned about my pay and whether I'm gonna be able to put food on the table for my kids. So, my brain is elsewhere, and I'm not giving that patient a hundred percent of my my care. And that's when mistakes happen, and that's when things happen, and that's when my license is on the line. Because I'm distracted, because I'm concerned about my home. And I shouldn't have to be concerned about my home and my pay when I'm on the, when I'm on the truck and I'm helping a patient.
Well, and I'm sure, just like we're having this preliminary discussion about what to do, whatever you said the preliminary discussion was about going into a twenty-four hour shift, I'm, you know, that's probably exciting to know that you're gonna get paid overtime every, every week guaranteed, that you only have to be there for two twenty-four hour shifts, and you can have a second job. You know, a lot of people in our other departments don't even have that option. So, there is, there are both sides of the table to look at, and no one's trying to just cut anyone's income by these numbers. That's not the goal here, to just say, oh, well, you're definitely gonna go from thirty-five thousand to twenty-seven thousand. That that is not the goal. But the goal is to maybe look at our department and say, we have fifty-two thousand dollars a year that we are dedicating in overtime. That's more than we're doing in many other departments combined. So, we have to look at what our options are. It doesn't mean you're getting all your overtime cut. But there are discussions that need to be had, and when we do put a director in charge of this particular department, hopefully, they will have a lot of input on that. There are people that have experience in this, that, you know, Lincoln County's pretty unique. There are not other three thousand population counties with a budget of six million dollars total that are paying fifty-two grand for their EMS overtime.
Well, like you said, Brandon.
And we know that you're not set on anything, but this is, we're trying to voice our opinion on that too.
And I appreciate that, I appreciate that.
Our side of it.
And like, like Brandon said, like you work at Bennington, and you said most of their people are volunteering, you're about the only paid person.
Yep.
Well, see, they can't, the reason they're that way, 'cause they probably can't, it's expensive. And we're not against employees, we're, what we're, we cost us money, we have, we're three thousand employees. You don't want us to raise our taxes, I'm sure, and that's one reason I ran for commissioner, because our taxes have gone up a lot the last five years. We're one of the highest tax counties in the state, and that hurts us for getting industry here, people moving here. And that, and that doesn't mean we're trying to hurt you guys or cut you back. It's just, we're looking to, if we can, try to save money, we will. And that doesn't mean we got any policy set yet on cutting overtime. We may trim it back some in some places, but again, we haven't set up a center.
And I'll just give you an example in numbers. If one person out of the six that are getting overtime did not get overtime one week out of the four to five weeks in a month, for fifty-two weeks, that's eight thousand three hundred and twenty dollars that we save by one person not getting that guaranteed eight hours. Not, not that that all is on one person every week, but you see what I'm saying? If there was a rotating shift where someone did not get their overtime one week out of the month.
But that does happen already, because we are paid by the week. So, like at the end of the month, or when the twenty-fifth shows up, you get, say, on the twenty-four, your paycheck comes due. So, you're not, you're gonna end up with one week that you don't get paid already. You don't get paid, yes, ma'am.
No, because I pay you, you may not record it as overtime, but I pay it as overtime when it comes in the following month, because I can't short you just because it's on two different time cards. That's against the law.
Well, then.
You, you may be having corrections made on your time card that your director's not telling you that I've made, because if your hours split, if you work twenty-four and you work twenty-four the second, the the week of the next pay period, I add those hours together, and I pay you the eight hours of overtime and the sixteen hours of regular time.
Well, part of the reason.
You may record it as twenty-four, but I'm paying you sixteen and twenty-four, or sixteen and eight.
Part of the reason I wouldn't let you.
But you're not getting the overtime in, are you?
Yes, you are.
You are.
You are.
Yes.
It's already pre-calculated, because even though you're turning in the the time card before the pay period ends, it's a pay ahead, actually. By the time it's, it's being, by the time the check is being issued, it was a pay ahead. And then if there, and then if it didn't happen that way, do you, do you adjust the next pay period?
Yeah, ba- basically, that's what takes so long doing time cards, is because you have to go back, because we pay overtime basically on forty hours a week, not necessarily how many hours you work in the day. So, I have to go back and pick up those days and make sure. And I check every single employee that works early and behind me to ensure that I didn't pay them, especially when the the twenty-fifth lands in the middle of the week.
Talking about that, I'll go.
The perfect Saturday, Sunday situation.
The only time that you don't lose your, the only time you lose your overtime is if you take a patient.
The, the reason I wouldn't tell the employees about corrections made on their time cards uh post, post you changing them to make the corrections. Everything right, Dawn, was because I don't see their time cards after you make your corrections.
She knows that. I think she's just saying he might not have been aware of how that happens between one day to the next. Okay, in the interest of time, again, I'm sorry, I think there's a lot more discussion that needs to happen here. And please be, let it be known, this is not a decision that's already happened. I understand you're worried about the discussion happening, and I appreciate you bringing concerns to the table, because we need to consider what your view is too. But like I said, just the concept of one person not getting a guaranteed overtime in a particular week on a rotating basis for the entire year is eight thousand dollars. So, there has to be a happy medium. No one's saying we're gonna cut that fifty-two thousand overnight, and you're never gonna get overtime. But there has to be a way to make a little bit of an adjustment here. Um, and it is my understanding, what you said is that there was a lot of discussion going into the twenty-four hour shift. It's my understanding from some of the people that made that decision, there was not a lot of discussion. That's how Lincoln County got in such a unique position. We're paying guaranteed full rate, sleep, no sleep time adjustment, twenty-four hour shift, seven days a week. A lot of places don't do that, so I'm, I've been wondering why.
A lot of places do.
But.
And, but you have to look at the comparative numbers. What does their county look like? What does their budget look like? How many people are they serving on a twenty-four hour shift? Do you see what I'm saying? There's a lot of difference there.
I, I would like one thing out of it, then, okay, you're saying, they're saying, a lot of places do. On both side, on both sides of it, I think there needs to be facts given. Which counties do, which counties don't? Don't just tell us, well, these, there's a lot of counties that do and a lot of counties that don't. What counties?
Okay, I, I will put that information together for you, because I've talked to a lot of pe- commissioners who, you know, I'm not talking necessarily to their any directors.
Is this, is this something that the commissioner should be doing, or is this something that really should be your directors doing? Directors finding this information out. The commission is the boss, the director is the one. I come from business world, and and the president of the company isn't out doing what you guys are doing. The president tells the dr- tells the managers, hey, I would like you to look into this and evaluate what is the best solution, and come back to the table and tell us what is the best solution, or give us a couple of solutions. Not you guys as being the president, if you will, of the company, sitting here making decisions about it, when you don't know the jobs we do.
Well, there are two sides to that. One is, our job is to oversee the money. And so, in the interest of money is the reason why this conversation is happening.
But you should direct, you should direct the director.
Well, we will.
We don't have a director.
When we get a director, we'll probably.
And I have commended Brandon many times, because he's actually brought more to the table than I had seen in two years. And I really appreciate that. I mean, he's been very diligent with coming back with information that we, you're right, that we don't have.
No, I agree, you should have a director do that type of stuff.
Right, and so then we shouldn't even be having this conversation. But it came out in one of your videos, the recent thing, it came up. And it was public, out there for the public to see that what you guys were talking about. And this shouldn't even been.
Isn't that much better, though, that you know, rather than us have a discussion where no one knows, and then all of a sudden, you get hit with a cut, a time cut? I mean, that's the point.
Not necessarily, because then what you should have been doing was talking at the end. You're, we're ahead, because we don't have a director in place. But that should have been discussed with the director, and the director can talk to us as employees. But as it, it coming out, public notice to everybody that you're, and everybody gets alarmed by you saying these things publicly.
Well, no one knew that we were paying twenty-four hour shifts guaranteed overtime for every single employee. That's the public's right to know.
And that brings up another thing. When I was hired on, I was told I will work a forty-eight hour shift, or forty-eight hour shifts. That's part, that was part of my decision-making to take the job. Not to think that now, all of a sudden, you're gonna tell me I'm gonna get, make forty, or I'm gonna work forty hours, I'm gonna take a pay cut?
And four of the.
Well, coming from a business world, like you said, you would probably understand that things can't just continue to escalate financially.
You can't, you can't, you can't take, we couldn't take an employee, hire them at this, and then turn around and tell them, now we're gonna take your pay away.
But that's why your pay is hourly or salary. It's not based on a particular, it's not contract labor. If you were contract labor, we would say, you get paid X, these are the hours you put in, dah dah dah, or this is the job they perform.
But if I hired an employee, I told them how many hours they were gonna work, and it always started at forty, and I said, okay, now you may have overtime come into that. But I got told upfront, you will work overtime. You will be paid for overtime.
And four of the current six full-time employees were hired with that understanding. The two that have been here the longest were here before the twenty-four hour shifts went into effect. I would like to make one more comment. Uh, you talked about the higher tax rate in Lincoln County. And yes, that is a deterrent for people moving to this county. But EMS is also part of the infrastructure of this county, and if there was no, not a, a comparable EMS or a EMS service that was here, that would also deter people.
No, I'm not saying, I'm not saying get rid of EMS, or we'll make it all volunteer. It was all volunteer not too long ago, or years ago.
And that's why they went to twenty-four hour shifts, because they lost the volunteerism.
But a lot of small counties, and again, we're going to, I'm just throwing this out here. There are many counties, like Western Kansas, don't have fu- full-time EMS service paid. A lot of them.
And there are many counties in Western Kansas that are shutting down their services, because they can't man their trucks.
Exactly, they can't afford it. It comes, everything comes down to money.
They can't man, they can't man the schedule, because they don't have enough volunteers.
Yeah, there you go.
We understand that, I mean, but that's, but we're, that's more of a reality than raising everyone's taxes to continue to grow a department. That's, that's the problem. You know, we have to look at a balance. If we don't start making a balance now, then you are gonna end up looking at all or nothing. Do you want all or nothing, or do you want more of like a, of, a give and take? Because to raise your hourly wage so that you don't lose too much if your overtime gets cut by eight hours a month, do you see what I'm saying, or sixteen hours a month, whatever that may be? It's all hypothetical, but there has to be a give and take, or you are gonna end up looking at all or nothing. I don't wanna see that, for sure.
And when you're hired on at forty-eight hours guaranteed this overtime, that doesn't mean it goes on for eternity. Things change. You've worked the business world, you just said. You, if, if you have a downturn in the business, there's layoffs. There's this and that, it's always changing. It ain't guaranteed forty-eight forever. Hopefully, it could be, but maybe it's not, you know, maybe it's not on our budgets.
You were hired on at that, and that's what the statement was, that's how you operated.
But it's also not contractual, you signed a handbook that says that you will do as you're told.
I didn't sign a handbook, we didn't get one.
We still don't have current handbooks at the station.
Okay, I'll make a note of it.
And honestly, I just spoke to Dawn about that last week, and she said she would get some for us.
Okay.
And I told her, no hurry, get, when you can, when you have the time.
Well, there we go again, I mean, that's a director issue.
You should have been given a handbook when you filled out your paperwork. And I'm pretty certain that every single one of you guys were given a handbook at that county, because I can remember making some for them.
I haven't given a handbook, it's just an old one.
You probably have.
It's not a new, it's not a new revised one.
You should have a new one, because when the revised ones came out, every employee got one, and everyone had to sign that they received any of them.
That doesn't mean I did, I just don't. Okay, well, I, I thank you for coming in, I do appreciate that. I think it's more prudent to have the conversation than to just formulate something and then bring it out on the table. So, that's my opinion, I think that's how the board has done it. I'm sorry if that alarmed you to an unnecessary extent. But we will just continue this conversation, and nothing has been set in stone. And we will definitely be discussing this as we pursue a director position. So, thank you for coming in. Um, Leanne, if you have your information for us, do we?
Executive session, please.
So, we need to do an executive session. And it looks like, oh, Doug, I'm sorry, we're running a little behind, could we have about?
Oh, I'm fine.
Fifteen minutes and.
No rush, this is it for me.
Maybe ten, I guess, so we can, we can do ten?
Don't say that, that'll put you on a wonderful.
All righty. I'm gonna make the motion, I move to recess into executive session for ten minutes for the purpose of discussing treasurer department. for the purpose of discussing treasurer, uh, department evaluations pursuant to KSA seventy-five forty-three nineteen two B to discuss personnel matters of non-elected personnel with the treasurer and the board of county commissioners to reconvene in the basement meeting room. I guess that's all I need to say.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor for the executive session. If there's no further discussion, vote aye.
Aye.
None opposed.
I hate to make a move, but we have to leave. The executive said to make one. I'm so sorry.
Oh, I did move.
We're ready, yes. Thank you for being patient. Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you.
It's this and this. There's meant to be, oh, okay, two originals. One the county can keep, one that we can, I can either take it Wednesday when I'm in Topeka for legislative and a federal home loan bank kind of meeting, be right there in the neighborhood of Historical Society. But, uh, there's an extra and Kelly's gonna scrutinize some additional too. This is the, sort of the action piece other than the obvious signature that's required on the marked part of the application. But it's still the same intent as far as seeking funding assistance for historic preservation assessment purposes and trying to figure things out in regards to this fine historic structure. What it is, what it's about, and it's not unlike what the county has done a couple of times in the distant past. Back in the late eighties and then, uh, late nineties, early two thousands. And of course, things resulted after that with improvements on the, the, uh, late eighties, early nineties with elevator improvement, accessibility type changes. And then after the other one, it was a drainage system around the building and some work was done exterior wise, but not a lot. There were, there was a historic preservation fund type project involved with another one, tuck point kinds of things. Little bit of work on the back stairs, but the north stairs.
So is this written based on the bid that you had originally-
The twenty, twenty thousand three hundred for the consultant is that rough estimate.
Which is more than what, um, is that, that one was, but we're kind of doing a little bit more than what that preliminary estimate was.
Okay, and who's coming, who's bringing the in-kind to the table? Is that-
That's largely administrative inside here. There'll have to be somebody to host, the architect to show them around and some paperwork process, request for qualifications type, which our office and Kelly, we, we can help support that.
Right, I think a concern we had had was the administrator, does someone have to serve as the grant administrator on both the assessment grant and potentially the, the actual grant to the physical project?
Well, that would be a separate issue later that could be addressed. But as far as on the assessment itself and getting the architect, it's mostly county type folks in kind.
So that's what I'm saying, do we need to assign this, a particular person?
Yes, so there doesn't even, yes.
Because the board is gonna have a problem being that entity as we only meet once a week and we don't have any communication outside of the state.
Right.
If you, if you get the grant, the state historic preservation office needs to have a point person, there needs to be somebody here that's doing the paperwork, that's keeping track of staff time that-
So do you have any recommendations for us?
Well, Dawn being the county clerk, she knows who's going where and, and what's what and details. She can help delegate things too.
I wonder if we could reach out to the Historical Society and see if-
No, it, it needs to be here.
In the courthouse?
Somebody who's paid-
Oh, you, you did, okay.
So that there's value to it.
We have to, that's, that's our little goal, that's one of the-
Well, I appreciate that.
Kind of a public information officer in a way.
But there'll be things that need to be tracked. The RFP process to hire, somebody needs to be doing that process. So there's, there's work that needs to be done and, and, but that work done by county staff can be the in-kind match.
Are we assuming that this twenty-two thousand two hundred and eighty is going to cover all of the materials that we would need to then give to the contractor who may pick the bid? I mean, it's going to include the drawings and is that the assumption?
It should, it should.
It's not just a recommendation to us, it's actually the format and the layout and the blueprint for whoever does the work. Is that correct or?
I don't think we went as far as the blueprints. It's, it's part of the assessment study.
Not formal, not formal designs to go to construction yet.
I think that can be rolled into the next, into the next one, yes, yeah.
Into the first, into the actual project, okay. That's what I was getting at, where, where it cuts off in the process.
So this is- Right, this is basically, there, somebody's gonna be going around, they're gonna look at the, look at the exterior shell of the building. So we're talking the masonry, the windows, the, the painting of if there's any wood issues, stuff like that.
Everything structural.
Structural, provide a, a report on what the issues are, what they suggest for moving forward with that and the cost estimates for that.
Okay.
And that's the information that we can use into hopefully the next one.
So we will know where we stand as far as an overall project total and phases, a phase type breakdown.
Yeah, kind of a timeline of, well, this could be an early important one, this could be a secondary or tertiary type.
Prioritize.
Yeah.
So we're, this is a sixty forty, is that also what we're looking at for a split on the project part of it when we move on to the next?
If it's Heritage Trust Fund, that can be an eighty twenty, eighty-five fifteen, something like that. They are-
That's good news.
There's tight competition anymore because they haven't raised the ceiling and the dollars, Kansas economy is not generating as much recorded deeds as it was three or four, five years ago. But still, a structure like this should be competitive, especially with detailed assessment type information. Should be able to help.
Who determines that, that Heritage Trust Fund?
Well, it's a similar board that looks at those as also looking at these. They already have their recommendations because of a, a committee that's met on the Heritage Trust Fund. But they'll meet on, on May fourth to make the announcement on these as well as on those. That's kind of the timeline on, on the, uh-
Go ahead, I'll look at it.
The process.
If, if we're able to capture this grant, then where do we go with the RFP process? Is there a specific, I mean, how do you solicit for this assessment to be done?
Um, I think the, the state historic preservation o- office probably has some examples of RFPs and architects that have done a lot of different projects, so you can kind of, they have a list serve, so you can send it out through that. So it's just a matter, you'll have to put the RFP together, you've gotta send it out, you've gotta review it, you've gotta open bids, you've gotta do all that kind of stuff.
Is that what we're kind of tasking the administrator of the grant to do?
And we'll be in support of that, that person, Dawn, for example, to be supportive of, get it out and get it to X, Y, Z. And there'll be four or five that'll show interest, I'm sure.
May I have this?
Yeah, yeah, that's an extra, yeah.
Thank you.
I brought a couple of those if anybody else wants one. That kind of gives an idea on how they score things.
All right.
How they look at it, so.
Thank you very much for putting all of this together. I would entertain a motion to, um, I guess we could do it separately.
I will move the chairman to sign the grant application for the assessment of the Lincoln County area.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second for the chairman to sign the application that has been put together, um, with our Economic Development and More Central Regional Planning Commission. Is there any further discussion?
Uh, I would include in my motion also the letter.
Do you want to combine them?
Yes, I think the letter needs to go with it.
I'll, I'll read it.
Yeah.
Um, "The Lincoln County Board of Commissioners hereby commits local unavailable cash match of seven thousand dollars toward the total project costs relevant to the application of historic preservation fund assistance to assess and ready the county to better preserve the historic Lincoln County courthouse and its environment." Um, I would just say that that would probably be coming out of the line item or for the, they'll probably be coming out of the general fund.
Either that or for the capital reserve fund to kick it under it to-
Do we want to-
I, I would say we wait to make that decision later.
Okay, so those are our two options then. Is there any further discussion? If not, um, those in favor for the signing, vote aye.
Aye.
None opposed. Thank you.
And there are several copies of the letter if you wanna have.
Yeah.
We definitely want an original for the application, but there are multiple ones. Kelly can keep a copy of it as well, so. But will be helpful as soon as Heritage Historical Society blesses the assessment fund.
Any guess on the timeframe for that?
Well, that may, uh, May fourth, which is-
Seems like you hear barely-
One more one signed, Dawn.
Yeah, yeah, here's another one.
You want to sign two?
Yeah, that way Dawn can keep an original. It would be good. So that first week of May, first week of May would be great to know from them and pursue things.
Well, we do appreciate your work on this.
The Heritage Trust, we've helped off and on for probably twenty-five years, the Heritage Trust Fund and of course, two times here at the courthouse, the Marshall Yoey House, uh, depot over yonder. And it's just interesting, now they have applicants come forward for a little three-minute presentation in February.
We need all those.
No, this is just-
So that could be something to look forward to next year.
Do you want a copy for that one?
I have one, but-
Say, we got two more.
We can make sure that Dawn has one over yonder, so.
I'll take one too.
And she'll take one, so.
I think I got that, if you wanna double check that for me.
And she's gonna look at things also, uh, obviously.
Yeah, I've got a-
So the point of contact now is gonna be Dawn, you think, or Kelly?
Well, Historical Society's point of contact right in here will be Dawn, yeah. And she knows the building, so that's good.
And Kelly, you're kinda coordinating that.
Well, I'm, I'm, will help out Dawn as, yeah, I just can't be the grant administrator. I just feel like that needs to be a county employee and, and because of your guys' systems and all that kind of stuff.
Okay.
All right, but if you do wanna sign another one.
We have, we have three, you think?
Yep, you have extras. She's going to look at it further, especially the section one which talks about the, the big need. We're gonna add some more sentences to that. I have plenty of photographs, so past, recent and today, so to show, show things, so.
Thank you very much.
So we'll get him convinced.
Have a good week.
Good, thank you.
Okay, next on our agenda, Mr. O'Hare from the Highway Department. Sorry, we're fifteen behind. Thank you for waiting.
Good morning, Emily.
Good morning.
Last week I delegated some authority to one of the employees to assist me in, uh, taking care of some work with, uh, the absence of our road and bridge administrator. And, uh, that individual is, uh, Jesse Zacco and I would like to see if there can be a temporary adjustment in wages while he is assisting with those duties.
What are the qualifications?
I'm not gonna say what the qualifications are. I don't know if there are a hundred percent worth qualifications there. Um, but he is helping out and doing a good job so far of filling the shoes and helping me along. You know, he, he's got a general idea of the county, he's able to work well with the crews and get things moving.
I guess my question is, um, the last time that we went through this, it was a different person.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, the board had kind of preemptively approved that. This time you did it. I'm not subverting your authority within your department, I'm just kind of wondering if you don't have any qualifications to list off? What the reason is for the choice or how, where to go about evaluating, what type of-
Well, the main choice is the individual that helped out last time just does not have the time this go around because of taking care of his own territory. Uh, this time, this individual-
Had you already approached him, the last person? Has he already been approached and asked?
Yes.
And, and, and declined?
Yes. And so Jesse is willing to step up and, uh, help me out, you know. He, number one, he's willing. Number two, you know, he does know the county, he does work with the crews and I am able to use him out of his department of the bridge crew and we're still able to get some of the work done. It's not gonna be a total denial of work, if you know what I mean. Because there's still two other people within his area and they're able to catch up some of that work.
What was his previous job? I, I-
He was road and bridge foreman.
Road and bridge foreman, okay. Yeah, I didn't know.
Or, oh, excuse me, bridge foreman.
Drill the bridge.
Just bridges, yes. Sorry about that.
That's okay. Cause I didn't know, yeah. And so now you'll have him kind of just supporting you.
Yes, and he's kind of gets some stuff caught up. He's went out and worked on a bridge or something too, you know, so.
Now, you know we're going to probably advertise for a new highway supervisor, bridge supervisor.
Yes. Yes.
And if that happens and we get someone new, then he would go back to what he did before. Is that the understanding here?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay.
That would be correct.
I think before we need, before we make that kind of a decision, we need to discuss the employee in an executive session just to maybe be thorough. If you're willing to enter into one, I would make the motion. Otherwise, I would entertain a motion to approve the request at the table, but-
Would you wanna go into executive session with Michael?
Five minutes, um-
Well, just, okay. Just to discuss his personal, personal, this individual, I mean.
I guess I just had some questions about if, if, I can't ask in public if there are any credentials that'll, that- Last time when we had chosen a person, basically it was chosen on the basis that that particular greater operator had a high-quality route and was maintaining that job in that way and then they were going to then help instruct or formulate plans for the other operators. That was kind of the, the idea behind that one. So if this is, you're saying you're just taking the bridge crew chief, for lack of a better term, and you don't have any necessarily, any qualifications for that person to do another job, I'd like to discuss that a little further.
Do you wanna make a motion to go into executive session?
I will, yeah. I move to recess into executive session for five minutes for the purpose of discussing temporary appointment within the Department of the Highway to road and bridge supervisor pursuant to KSA seventy-five forty-three nineteen two B to discuss personnel matters of non-elected personnel. And I'm actually just going to request that it's the Board of County Commissioners and to reconvene in the basement meeting room of the courthouse.
I'll second.
In five minutes would be, I guess by the time we get out of here, eleven twenty-five to eleven thirty. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
One opposed, motion carries. Okay, after some discussion, um, we have decided not to approve your request at this time until we do some, um, further contemplating of that. We would like you to bring- further contemplating of that. We would like you to bring forth any credentials that you think this person may hold in order to justify a change in income. And we are concerned if we have a lot going on with culvert needs and bridge crew needs. We are concerned that if that's your choice for bridge crew, to change his position right now may be detrimental to what you're trying to accomplish with that branch of your department. Is there any other comment from the board on that?
Well, and if, if he would be only temporarily helping you until we hire a new road supervisor, and then may go back to a full-time job unless he would be part of getting it. I don't know if he would be hired if he's applying for it. But it would be temporary, so we, we're thinking that because of that, we don't want to proceed right now with a pay increase either. Because it'd be temporary. And he might only be working three months or four months for a year or less, and then go back to the regular job.
So, I guess I just want to make sure I fully understand this, that number one, you're not gonna allow him to have a pay increase. And number two, you do not want me to utilize him in that position that he needs to be doing bridge work. Is that what I'm getting from this conversation?
The consensus on number one would be yes. There may be differing opinions on the board for number two. I'll voice mine. I believe that if that was your choice, which you did put him in charge of the bridge crew, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And this is the time of year where we have a lot of concerns about culverts and bridges. My, my issue with that is if, then he needs to be doing his job. If there's more administrative stuff that needs done, that Bob was doing for you, maybe that's not the best choice. I don't know what options you have within your department. Maybe you need to reconsider who has been doing what and how that would benefit you. As far as taking someone away from your bridge crew, I don't see how that could help you at this time of year. But that's my personal stance on that.
I understand your viewpoint, but I'll tell you mine. It's not good to pull anybody right now. You know, that, that is my personal opinion, you know. Obviously, I can't pull a blade operator. I mean, that's just totally unfair to that individual. Pulling a truck driver right now is not a very wise choice either, because we're trying to move as much material as we can to at least get us by here. And then, you know, bridge crew being a three-person thing, you know, he's still able to do some of his work as that foreman that he is. And assist me, you know. So to me, that made the best option out there. I'm not saying that there's nobody else that I can look at. I just don't see anyone else that would be willing to do it. You know, so that, that's why I made the decision I made, and I would like to be able to continue using him as much as I can. If I have a project that I need him to be physically working on, I will have him do that work.
And I don't think the board is going to tell you, no, you cannot. I mean, we're in charge of whether we're promoting him or not. At this time, it's not a promotion. If you're to utilize him in the capacity in which you see fit as his boss, that's not our decision.
Very well. I do have evaluations completed, except for one that is off for extended period. There's one I would like to, at a minimum, discuss today for his six-month performance.
And you have, I'm sorry, could you repeat that? You did your evaluations save a persons, or did you say less someones?
Minus one person that's off for extended illness.
You want to go to executive session to discuss this?
If that's how you guys typically do these, then I guess.
Is this just for the six-month one?
For now, I think we, I don't think we have time with everything going on, and I didn't get on the agenda.
Right, and I think we, if we could look at the evaluations, you know, next week, we still have time because we wanted them at the first quarter, which you're on schedule. Thank you very much. And then, I think.
Thank you for getting those done.
It was a joint effort.
With?
Bob. He, he had done a lot of them, but I reviewed everything, and I've added, and I did the set down with.
Well, we appreciate you doing it, because last week we were, uh, did put a lot of pressure on you, and you did that. That's good. We thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
And I do believe we have time to review them, because we are not gonna institute a monetary match to the evaluation for a few months yet. So maybe we could go over those thoroughly in an executive session that we can have a long, longer time to discuss. But the six-month, when is that? Who is the employee for the six-month?
Uh, Tim Lyon.
Tim Lyon. And when, when was the six-month?
I believe it's this month.
So it would be next pay period?
No, it needs to be on this pay period. He completed on February sixth.
Tim's a blade guy, right?
That's correct.
And at this time, you are recommending that he receive his?
Fifty cents, six-month fifty cents. Yes, ma'am. I did not have input on this one, because this one was all completed one hundred percent by Bob.
Okay.
And he sat down, visited with the employee and everything else, so. That portion of it was taken care of. I did not interject.
Okay, do you have anything else besides that?
Uh, yes, I do.
Go ahead, continue, please.
Okay. I do have the two gravel agreements that are due this year completed. One will be the Barbara Holmes pit, and the other one will be the Mark Murray pit.
How many years?
Uh, I believe both of these did the one year at a time.
Last time and this time?
Yes.
You're, you're bringing them back, and they wanted to extend one additional? And is this at two dollars per cubic yard?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that for every pit, for every contract?
Yes, sir.
We uniformed pretty much this system last year at this time, so.
Yeah, I knew. One time you had some of the dollar was.
We increased it to two, and then.
But now we're all consistent everywhere.
And I think we gave them the option of one, two, or three years. Is that how we did it?
That's how we typically do it, yes.
Okay. So these both are for one year, starting the April first, I guess? Terminating on March thirty-first of twenty twenty?
I would move into a gravel agreement with Barbara Holmes and Mark Murray.
I'll second.
It's been motioned and seconded to sign the gravel removal and purchase agreements for both bids, Holmes and Murray. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. None opposed? Did you have anything else?
Yes. Been trying to get these fuel contracts figured out. I know we were approached by DNS to do a four contract. Great Bend Co-op came and visited with me. I have not heard anything back from them. And I put a request to Home Oil that we are currently using to do the same. I'm gonna tell you for my opinion right now at this point, the, the information I have is inaccurate. Based on the fact that DNS still needs to get me more paperwork, but if you guys would like to review this, you're more than welcome to. Uh, but I visited with him last week, and he basically said that his fuel contract price would not be what is on this sheet. And I asked him to provide me another one, and he has not done that yet. Because the fuel that he originally had no longer exists, so he would have to go and start over a new one.
Okay. But basically, just to clarify, you're talking about contracting diesel?
Yes, ma'am.
Or off-road diesel. For, at any given period of time? Are they comparable contracts, or?
No, they're gonna be April first through September thirtieth.
Okay.
Is what I've asked from him.
Okay.
And the reason being for that is, in those other months, we stand to potentially have to add, number one, diesel to look for a winter blend and stuff like that. And just like unleaded gasoline, they, no company that I've visited with will do a contract on gasoline unless you go with ethanol, and we do not run ethanol. So.
And is this based, are these contracts based on an estimated quantity that you've given according to what our his, our history of usage is, consumption, or?
Yes and no. One, put down a quantity, which is low. The current provider kind of hasn't that idea of what we're using, so, you know, he didn't ask for a quantity.
Okay. So it's just a price per gallon?
Do we get a discount because we buy large volume?
Not really.
Not really, yeah.
Well, not for the one that's giving just price per gallon without a quantity, but I would assume that the other one, if you're guaranteeing them a minimum quantity.
Well, on a transport, I'm not gonna say they're giving you a discount, but they're. The way they deal, the way it sounds to me is they'll give you a price per gallon over rack price. You know, basically what it costs them to deliver it and any profit margin they have in it.
And that's probably cheaper than having to pump out the station.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. That's what I'm wondering. Yeah, okay. Thanks.
So, it, it's incomplete information.
Have we been paying prep pump price?
Oh, gotta know.
Okay.
No, we've.
The price from anything I've gotten here is gonna be very similar, if not identical, to what we've been doing in the past.
Okay.
I don't see a.
So you're gonna wait until you get the other bids to bring everything to the table?
I need more information to make it accurate.
Okay.
So.
Thank you for following up on that.
And outside of this eval, that's all I have at this time.
Would you want to go with the factors and drive around and take pictures and all that?
Yes, we had some correspondence this morning. This letter, would you like to hand that over? We've had a, we have a volunteer who is willing to input information into the, the program, the three-one-one program that we have. So she's actually here today, but she just walked out of the room. She is offering to go around and identify issues, talk to people, you know, notate, mark, map, et cetera, on her own time. She is requesting mileage reimbursement to do that, but the letter basically states that if she inputs the information, then you'd be able to categorize it and prioritize it once it's, well, as it comes in, once it's complete, et cetera.
Do you have any concerns over that, or suggestions, or anything, or disagree doing it?
Honestly, I'm not. There's more to it than just input. I need somebody on the backside that understands the road and bridge department and can work at that end of it. That, that is my major concern.
Are you talking about someone on, on your side to be able to do, to give feedback to the report of? If someone's just reporting, there's a hole here, there's a sign down here, there's, you know, this bridge is closed, if they're marking all those things. Are you saying you want someone to be able to rebut that and say, and give a feedback to it, or?
Just basically somebody internal that's gonna have the time to manage all of it, you know. There, there's gonna be, who knows how many sites when, once we get everything up and running, you know. It could be one site a week to fifty sites a week, you know, and, and that takes time to process all that. And to go ahead and go through and, and look and see what these projects are, get a sheet put together and say, okay, you know, we got twenty culverts this week we need to go look at. We got ten gravel locations we need to go look at. We got three washout locations we need to go look at. We got tree issues to go look at.
If I may interrupt.
To go look at.
I think the offer is just to.
No, I understand.
Not to, not to pride, you would prioritize it. It's your department.
No, I understand that. But right now at this time, I don't see why I would pay somebody to do that until we can get it up and running. And even once we get it up and running, should be more than welcome to do that if we open it up to the public and do it on our own time anyways. Why, why would we spend time on it, you know, and I realize that we have not been using it, but a lot of that has come from a little bit of willingness and a little bit of time available to do this stuff. You know, sometimes when you've been doing something some way, you end up reverting back to that because it works smoother for you, you know. So, right now at this time, I would not be in favor of paying somebody to go out and find spots when I don't have somebody internally to go through what's just been added.
Well, some of those issues are not going to change. I mean, if you have a signed down, it's not gonna change unless your operator takes it upon themselves to change that issue. Or if you have a hole in the road that really needs a lot of attention, that's not going to change either. Some things may change, you know, someone may go out and grade a road that needed graded, and then that's done. And I understand what you're saying. There's no one there to check that off the list. However, merely inputting the information into the system would be beneficial to everyone because it's there for you at your disposal whenever you have time. It's not, I don't think the assumption.
It's not like a direction for you gotta, uh.
I, I, I see where you're coming from.
It's just like heads up, it's like a heads up.
If it's, if it's a big deal and it needs taking care of, pick up the phone and call us, and we'll take care of it, you know. That's the way I see it right now, you know. I, I don't necessarily want to be paying somebody to go out and do it right now when, once everything's in place that we can do it to where it needs to be.
Why do you keep saying, once everything's in place? I'm wondering, because we've already had this.
We need employees.
But we've already had this program for over a year, when you had your full crew and everything. So I'm just, I'm wondering, you keep saying, like, in the future, when, when it's in place, but we've had it in place, it's just not being utilized. And actually, it is being utilized, or was, when I asked you for a report. There were about three or four employees who were constantly updating things on their route, so it already is in place. I'm not sure why you keep saying that.
The willingness and the people in place to do it. At the time, Bob was not set up to do it. He did not desire to do that.
Well, that doesn't keep anyone else from doing it.
No, it, it, it doesn't, but it does, because if you're just gonna sit there and enter stuff that we're not able to get to, the guys are just going and doing the job instead of putting stuff in there. You know, I understand that you're not happy with the way I've done this, and I understand it. I really do. I, I needed to be better about it, and I will be getting better with it in the future when we get people in place.
Well, I think this is just.
You know, I, I, I'm just asking for a working relationship within the board and the community to allow things to get to where I would like it to be. Instead of, you know, cramming it down my throat, and I don't have time right now. I understand.
Well, we can hold off and do that. It's not a requirement or nothing. It's just, it was just a volunteer.
I understand.
Coming ahead. That's all this is. It's not like we're, uh, uh, giving you an order to do something like that.
You know, and, and there's gonna be several things I hope can change when we get into the future, you know. The company did not want to come out and do a hands-on, and I'm gonna make them come out and do a hands-on. You know, it, it's better to have them go over the system with us than them train me, me train them. So, you know, there's several things I'd like to get done before we can make everything go the way it is. And then, once we get to that point, anybody that wants to, they will be able to do it free. You know, the county's not paying somebody to do it.
Well, we're already, we're already paid.
What are we gonna do when another ten people come in and say they would like to get mileage to do stuff in their territory? You know, I don't think that we need to make this a paid service to individuals, you know.
A few hundred dollars.
We didn't take applications on this.
A few hundred dollars a month, whatever it may be, to keep track of things or to input things where you can see it from any location, to me, sounds like an investment. It's not an unnecessary expense. That's an investment for your job security. So I'm, I, I don't agree with, I mean, your, your defense is saying that you don't have time for it. We're not asking you to do it. I'm suggesting that you take the help, because you're constantly saying that you're shorthanded and that you're not able. But this would be a way for everyone who's in your crew to be involved, because once it shows up on their map, then maybe they've been made aware of it. It doesn't mean they're going to act on it right away. And of course, you would be the boss to supervise the priority of those. And what you're saying to me right now is you don't have time to prioritize them. So, that's not an immediate necessity. We don't even have them input into the system, whatever the issues may be.
There's a lot more to it than just input, I guess, you know. Whether or not you need a one call, you know. What size pipe is it? What's the length? What's the rideaway? What's all this? You know, it's all gotta be calculated into it, so. There's a lot of backside work to other than just snapping a photo and calling it, but I guess if that's what this board wants.
Well, we can hold off on that, I think. I mean, this is more or less just a volunteer, one can help, probably because you guys are busy, have a lot of work. This could be like some help saying, hey, this is, this is problem here, here, here. That isn't like a order for you gotta go fix this stuff right now type of thing. It's just like a heads-up saying, there's a problem here. That's all this is. And I know what you're saying, maybe mileage, uh, I, yeah, I don't know. My opinion is we should put this off for now.
I think now is the time. I think now's the time of year to do it because we have issues cropping up that are more visible now than will be in the future or have been in the past. I mean, this is, everyone's getting into work mode, the springs are showing where they're coming into the road and causing erosion. You know, waiting isn't gonna help us.
Yeah, if I may. What qualif- I guess I would revert back to the previous question when Mr. O'Hare asked for somebody to assist him in the office. The question was asked by the board, what qualifications does that person have to do the job he was asking for assistance for? So I would go back to that question, what qualifications does this volunteer, this requesting mileage have to do the job that she's trying to volunteer to do? Does she know the ins and outs of her qualifications?
It isn't giving recommendations on how to fix anything. It's ta- and, and it specifically explains in the letter to take those complaints from the public, just like, I mean, we have a, we're paying a secretary to take complaints from the public right now on the phone all the time. And that's not necessarily a qualification to write down what someone says or to take a picture of what the issue is. I mean, that's how we get a lot of our notifications from people. It's just that we haven't been using the system that we already pay for, it hasn't been implemented. A few employees have chosen to use it, no one's been mandated to use it.
Yes, doesn't, you don't have to be that qualified driving around out of the country. And if you see a problem, you can take a picture of it, then go on, that's all she's gonna do. You know, if you have a road issue, for whatever reason. And maybe he could, Michael could rest it saying, that's not that big a deal now, we won't do anything about it. You know, it's not like it's a policy change or something here, it's just a volunteer.
In my opinion, I, I'm not wanting to do this right now.
Okay. Well, I, I, I can understand that. You're loaded busy now.
Well, I don't think we're asking him to do it, though.
Yeah.
I mean, if you're worried about spending the money, I don't think, like I said, I mean, how, how many miles are we gonna get covered? There are a thousand miles in the county, that's times point five eight, you know, twenty-five hundred dollars or so. I don't see that as a grave expense at this time.
I think Michael brought a good point. About when the next one volunteers, we're gonna pay that one. The other thing is that we're an equal opportunity people. If we want this, maybe we ought to announce it publicly too. I would open them right now and that, I do not think that that's... Think we have a system where they can call the office and, and tell them where the problems are. At the present time, yes, I think three-one, or whatever that program is, is good. I think as we move to road supervisor, we will probably have someone younger that will be more adept at electronics and be able to, to do that. So, I would be, say that we would wait.
No, I kinda agree with that too. I would wait too, yeah.
Well, we can discuss it again. Is there anything else besides the evaluation?
I do not.
Okay, I do have, uh, one mention of something. The one-twentieth road issues, I believe you had sent someone out after hours. I've had quite a few calls on that, the south end there of Desper Road. Is that why you're here?
I live on Hundred Twentieth Road, but the hole in the road was not, is not what I was talking about. You guys had a project here two years ago, put in three culverts there on Hundred Twentieth Road. And, uh, I went down, and before they even dug any dirt down there, the old culvert had, the ground level was ten foot above the old culvert. So they dug all that out and put the new one right in the same spot. Now I've got a problem with the fence line here. Brand new fence is halfway under water, there's, it's not draining. Plus, the road ditch that was left bare with no erosion control on it, it came down, when the water came down, big old gully underneath my fence, the county come along and dumped a load of gravel in that hole, which buried my post, buried my wire. And, and it's just getting worse.
Um, what is the intersection there that you're talking about? Can you...
Well, it's about a half mile north of, uh, Hundred Twentieth Road and Colt.
Colt, okay. And how long ago was that that you said when the county had dumped right there?
That was, uh...
Recently.
About eight months after the job was completed.
Probably close to six, seven years ago, I think, when we did that project.
Two years ago.
Did we put those new culverts across One Twenty?
Yes. Right there.
I don't know if it's that great.
This would've been our grant, yes. It's been...
Two years ago is when the job was done. And now it, it's causing... The neighbors got half the road in their pasture, not to mention more problems of erosion caused by. And I can show you a picture of my fence. I went down there while the superintendent was done and say, you need to put an elbow on this, into this here culvert and raise this whole ditch up, ten feet.
That was...
We did the loan in twenty thirteen.
Thirteen.
So, it was probably twenty, twenty thirteen or twenty fourteen.
Five, six years ago. And that project was engineered by Schwabe and...
Kind of wasn't fast.
It maybe does, I might be wrong.
Well, it's a, it's a fact.
So what needs done there is the question.
I'm gonna need to go look at it and find out.
I think you need to have, what's his name, look at it too with you.
Tanner.
See what's going on now, that, all that dirt's coming down, all that ditch, it doesn't have any erosion control in. It's building around, it's gonna be ten foot above the hole, just like it was on the old one, one of these days. And it's already, my fence is being buried, a brand new fence.
Well, and in that same area, you said you weren't necessarily here about that, but there have been some issues reported, the holes in the road, the deterioration around the culvert. And so I got a few phone calls this week from some people who gave some good input. And basically what they're saying is, it, it's not a top of the road issue, it's an under the road issue. And we really need to make a plan to target those specific areas, order the proper sized rock and relay the foundation and the base of the road in that area. Not necessarily the whole stretch, but to have it marked out and to, you know, price out exactly what size rock we're using and do it properly and build that base again. Um...
Where is that again, a Colt, Colt?
Well, it's that southern end, over the stretch of probably two miles, but it's not...
It's where we got some springs opening up. I think there's four or five locations in that area.
It's coming down through those hills there a bit.
We've got, we've got several locations throughout the county that we got the same issue. It's not just that road.
A lot of that old hill...
And some we have dug out, some we've just top treated and...
Okay. And it's a lot of that I drilled there yesterday, a lot of that's that sandy, old sandstone rock road to begin with 'cause those are those sand hills and then rock on top of that, that's gonna be unstable base almost no matter what you do. But I know we can maybe push it harder, this rock down there maybe stabilize it.
Once the moisture starts going down, they should heal themselves. But until then, if we, uh, if that's the direction this board liked me to do, we can, uh, dig them out and we can put the five, six inch rock in to build the base and cover it up with other materials as we go. You know, we're, we're trying to come up with some options here, you know? We've tried a lot of things and some have worked better than others, but there's not really a perfect fix, you know? I, I don't know how deep a person's gonna have to end up going to make some of these spots salt, you know? I- it's a unique situation, it's not a common...
It's common up those hills, that's where they're, and that's, like you say, you got springs in there and uneven ground and that sandy ground. So that's unstable. You might dip ten feet deep and still unstable. But yeah, you might have to work on that, Michael, I don't...
And there's been times in the past that we have dug on a rock ledge and we've made it a lot worse than what it was.
Do would you, would you know how many, how big an area that'd be, how many feet, hundreds of feet or half a mile?
Some are big, some are small.
Depends on the area, each individual one, right? I see where it's at, where that happens.
Correct.
Okay.
You guys are forty-five minutes behind, you need to turn your head.
Yes, I, yeah.
Probably on the clock.
Okay.
Well, between twelfth road and fourteenth road on Colt Drive, there needs to be something done.
Twelfth and fourteenth.
Yeah, there's a couple big hills that are treacherous.
Okay.
And if you guys...
It needs a big old six foot culvert down on the bottom and the bottom of that valley raised up is between us and the Petermans over there.
Okay.
There's four residents on that road.
Okay. So, at this time, are you done? We'll, we will address, could you leave that for us?
I can just leave this.
Yep, just flip it on there, we will address that at the end.
My recommendation is the fifty cents and then everything's in here.
Okay, thank you. Just leave that for us and we'll review it.
But, thank you.
At this time, I would like to amend the agenda. I believe we need to speak with the nursing home attorney up to Pika, who is potentially waiting on a phone call, am I right?
Um, I told him that you were going behind, so he was gonna go eat a sandwich out ten minutes ago and then he came back and...
So we still have a little bit of time?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you for that. Okay, I'm sorry. Then I will proceed, uh, we have David Gersman next, if you'd come to the table.
Thanks, Michael.
All right.
You all have a great week.
Um, Michael, do you have a moment to wait because I, I see that your proposal is, you have highway department listed, so...
I think you might like some of the things I'm going to suggest. Um, good morning, guys.
Good morning.
Thank you for having me on the agenda. I'm gonna hand out some documents. Um, I'm gonna give Dawn the electronic copy so she can print these in color. I've read these, I know other people have read these. I would recommend that all three commissioners read these studies. These are KDOT and KU sponsored studies. They're essentially the bible and the gospel for how counties like ours struggling with our roads, bridges and culverts can actually solve them at a fraction of the cost and a fraction of the time than we, the way, the old practices that our county and some other counties have been struggling with for years. So I'll pass these out. This is bound backwards, this is your front page and that's your rear. I'm gonna give you these. The KU has a research library with hundreds if not thousands of state-sponsored research studies that all the counties in Kansas frequently participate in, videos and all sorts of, um, technical papers, how-to guides and, and conclusions for counties like ours. And I brought just a couple of these. Randy, I think you'll especially enjoy the ability to query in the state database for things like this. And for every paper they've ever done, there are summary documents like these. And these summary documents are the summaries that sell what those books provide counties like ours. The state spends millions of dollars sponsoring these studies. I suggest that we begin taking advantage of them. Lincoln County is a lot, is like a lot of small counties. It's, it is struggling to keep its agent county roads, bridges and other infrastructure maintained. I believe there are innovative and proven newer techniques and practices being implemented in other counties throughout the United States and throughout Kansas and counties our size that Lincoln County can and should take advantage of. I have brought some of these federal and state sponsored study guides. And I, I, I mentioned, they represent just a tiny sampling of the KDOT sponsored research papers and studies that are available in digital format. Mr. Lowman, I, I, I encourage you to go to that research library. You'll, you, I think you'll have, uh, time as we kind of come from similar fields. I come this morning to ask the commission to immediately act to create a highway department committee. The committee will be charged to work closely with Mr. O'Hare and assist him in the following ways. Conduct research, gather state and federal research papers, evaluate that research and make recommendations for Mr. O'Hare. Assist Mr. O'Hare to create both short-term and long-term strategic plans for capital improvements and upgrades. This includes using the mobile three-one-one system to plan projects, create budgets, create material lists and labor estimates and create a prioritized map of every bridge, culvert, ditch and road service that is in need of repair throughout this county. This includes gathering estimates for work and evaluating plans against previously completed projects in this and other counties, once a consensus is arrived for what those prioritized needs should be. The committee will provide written reports to the Board of County Commissioners and that includes recommendations and the strategic plans and project budgets. This committee will be made up of Mr. O'Hare, one commissioner and at least four non-county employee citizens who live in one of the four quadrants of Lincoln County, plus one citizen who will be at large. The commissioners will rotate at their discretion working with this committee. The citizens who will be appointed will be volunteers who'll do the following. Conduct research and bring it to the committee as volunteers. Do research and data entry into the mobile three-one-one as volunteers and acting as mentors to any employee in the highway department when Mr. O'Hare requests it. Working on and producing the strategic plans that will be provided to the full Board of County Commission for approval when any action is required. Taking field trips around the county with or without Mr. O'Hare to study the conditions of roads, culverts, bridges and drainage systems throughout the county. Taking field trips to other counties to see some of the latest innovations in low water crossing techniques that other counties are implementing. Act as ombudsman and women for citizen concerns and requests which are emailed or mailed in writing to the committee that will investigate their complaints and make recommendations to Mr. O'Hare. Provide a forum for citizens to bring ideas, suggestions and requests to save your full commission the time of doing it here. Provide quarterly disposition reports to the Board of County Commissioners so the Board of County Commissioners sees which complaints are being addressed and what timeframe and which ones are outstanding, which can all be entered into mobile three-one-one. Three-one-one is a process stream system, just like you would find in a manufacturing plant. It's designed for people who virtually know nothing but what their eyes and ears tell them to key in the raw data. They then sit there until Mr. O'Hare or anyone else he designates looks for things to look at, do that backend at their time and discretion as budget allows and get them into the system so they start lighting up on the map and then everybody, including you, can track it without taking up valuable time during these meetings. The committee will be an advisory group only. It will not be able to take binding action and it will not be able to expend its own funds. Any use of funds will have to be approved during regular Board of County Commission meetings as, as this will afford Mr. O'Hare a proper venue for dealing with citizen complaints and other matters before it has to take your time. I believe this, this will help Mr. O'Hare because frankly, I believe making him come here every week is a waste of his time and his departments for some of the things that end up getting discussed during the full board meetings, especially when he has to wait when the, the meeting is running late. I think the commission, the, the committee will be a much more valuable time for him to spend so that the essence of what he decides can be brought before you for action. I also recommend that the Board of County Commissioners approve paying Mr. O'Hare overtime for every hour he spends meeting with the committee and that will have its meetings during weekdays and evenings when USD two ninety-eight has no athletic events or any other conflicts with, with Mr. O'Hare's familial obligations. He can set the regular schedule and decide when the spec- special schedule is called for. Most of all, I believe Mr. O'Hare deserves no less than the above. He has one of the most complex and hardest county department jobs in the county and he was appointed into this position because at the time, no one else with a college degree, civil engineering graduate degree, or even a masters of public administration applied for it. This has put him at a disadvantage and I believe that if the county puts four individuals on the committee with an, with a fifth that has the right skill sets, the county can begin to do a lot more with the money it currently expends on its infrastructure needs. In fact, when he reads one of these authored papers, we, in some cases, we could be doing four to five times the bridge replacements that we are doing now in the same time and the same budget. There is actually prices in there, they, they watched other counties do these studies, they've proven the designs and they are a fraction of the old way that we do things in this county. To volunteer on this committee, a citizen must be willing to do the following. Volunteer no less than twenty hours a month doing research, reading papers, attending county paid seminars offering, offered by KDOT around the state. Have a four-year college degree with a major or substantial credit hours in engineering, pure science, design or project planning, or an advanced degree in engineering or a science degree. Have executive business experience, which includes running a farm and have some basic familiarity with operating and working on large machinery and doing earthworks projects. Just about any farmer in this county would qualify. Have some computer software, IT skill sets, working with software including cloud-based applications and familiar with basic network connectivity principles. And have demonstrated written skills. The committee will meet no less than monthly or more often as it decides. The committee's goal will be to provide a strategic short-term recommendation to this county commission within ninety days of its formation and a long-term strategic plan ready before the commission finalizes budgets for next fiscal year. We can do this rapidly and we can start to affect real positive change for the taxpayers in this county. This is not gonna be like any other appointed body in Lincoln County. The committee's citizen volunteers will be doing a lot of work each month in addition to just attending the meetings and finding consensus and helping Mr. O'Hare plan, plan out the county's road and bridge future. I am volunteering to be one of... I am volunteering to be one of the citizens on this committee, if the Board of Commission sees fit. I did the things that I'm suggesting when I worked with USD 298's facility committee. I proved that when, even when I'm seen as an outlier, someone with even impossible to achieve goals, that I can work with a diverse group of individuals and achieve the impossible. In USD 298's case, many of my goals were implemented at up to eighty percent cost reductions compared with the original design assumptions. As we are, uh, trying to make up time, I'm gonna read one more paragraph, and then I'm going to just distribute this that you can read the last recommendation that I make regarding the decision that you made to shut down the departments on Friday. So, finally, I will recommend one last thing, and that's the Board of County Commission holds off replacing Mr. Howe, who I've heard is retired. As one of the oldest county employees, I appreciate his longevity of service, but his experience and know-how regarding greater operation and other highway practices was dated. We should use his retirement as an opportunity to embrace the latest techniques and practices that other counties in Kansas have been implementing now for the last ten years. I recommend you consider eliminating the highway department supervisor position and benefits, and use it to fully fund an overtime budget for the entire highway department. At Mr. O'Hare's discretion, he and his staff should be able to take advantage of the coming longer days to get as much work done as possible when we have the opportunity to do it. The savings will also pay for some novel attachments and equipment options that I believe should be added to graders and the department's arsenal for clearing ditches, culverts, and dealing with rocks and built-up burns that line hundreds of miles of our county roads. The savings will more than also cover any nominal costs for mileage, training seminars, and additional seats or tablets of the Mobile 311 for the committee and commissioners' use. That concludes, uh, the first part. Wanna hand this out. I wanna let you know, last week, my wife and I called over fifty county highway departments in the state of Kansas from the smallest of the populations of seventy-five hundred to study how other counties are dealing with the extended days, which ones take Fridays completely off, which ones split their shifts in half so everyone can have a three-day weekend, but there's still work being done on fair-weather days, Monday and Friday. Some departments are keeping their shops open to take advantage of the fact when the highway department isn't using all their equipment, and some departments are keeping the secretary or office administrator working at least half the day on Fridays to keep that essential office open to the public, which, as you know, calls frequently with sometimes urgent needs. And that.
Are you just giving us the results of the fifty phone calls?
I, 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 I just, it's in there and it's summarized.
Okay.
I will be giving the commission a, an actual raw list of the counties we called, the phone numbers we called, and the results. We actually asked one question, and then if they offered additional information, we took notes because we were trying to keep the survey as scientific. But we did find, like many surveys, we're gonna be able to do another survey based on what we learned about these other departments, some of which were very happy to share their insights, including some counties that had done the four-day schedule and later decided, after they looked at it closely, that there were other ways to achieve everybody's ends, and that they told me they would never go back to the Friday-being-completely-shut-down method. Thanks again for your time. You can each one have these. And I will give the electronic copies of these booklets to Dawn, and hopefully, she can either email you the PDFs or print out a much better way than I did, um, these, uh, very important research things.
Thank you for your time.
You're very welcome.
Rhonda?
Okay, I'm, two minutes is all my time you need.
Okay.
I was just gonna let you know, I mail notices out on Friday, so people will be getting the mails, notices in the mail. Not a lot of changes this year. Ag land, cropland, uh, mostly stayed the same, or went up a little, a few dollars. Pasture did go up, so now we're at like fifty-seven dollars an acre, somewhere in that range. Let's see, forty-seven, thirty-seven on pasture. Didn't have a whole lot of new construction this year. And basically, right now, looking at it without any hearings or anything, we, in assessed value, we've gained six-hundred-and-eighty-eight thousand. So, we haven't had a, a big increase this year, this year. But, yeah, everything, you know, houses and stuff, I'd say the same. As I said, this year, ag land, cropland, you know, very little change, if any. So, I was just gonna give you an update on, really, no sound.
Thank you. Did you happen to do the evaluation here?
Not yet.
Okay.
I'll get on the schedule for.
You have, I mean.
I can get on the schedule for that.
That's fine.
You said six-hundred thousand, that, you're just talking about real estate, right?
Right, right, right. That's nothing else. That's just real estate. That's what that is, so, not a big increase there, but, you know, without, with ag land, not changing much, you know.
Well, that pasture is going up, that.
That helped, that's gonna catch some, yes.
That'll help us here in this county.
Yeah.
Because we have a lot more grass.
Right, right.
Is that because of the, when they evaluate that, is that based on the whole state evaluation effort, or is it just Lincoln County?
Lincoln County, it's, Lincoln County, um, information is used just for Lincoln County.
I see.
Yeah, that's, the use of ag stuff is just for Lincoln County.
But like, like, values, like, say, a farm ground has actually come down in proportion.
That doesn't have any, no, that doesn't have any correlation to, to use value.
You guys have like an eight-year rate rotated. I talked to, you know, Truett about that. You have a rotated eight-year average, right?
Average and stuff, and market value, market value doesn't have any.
Doesn't have nothing to do with that, yeah, okay. See, I didn't know that. I don't know if a lot of people know that. Because they know farmland's come down last couple of years, and they say, how come my taxes are still up?
Yeah, there's people that don't know. There's a lot of people that ask that, and I, you know, I explain, no, there hasn't. And they go, oh, okay, you know, because, you know, people think it does, it doesn't, you know.
Right, right, okay.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Did Jennifer leave, or she's?
No, I'm back here.
Oh, okay.
I was trying to see it.
Okay.
How you doing?
Mr. Hay was responding to an email I sent.
Okay.
So, if you wanted to take that, please, I have a chance to. Subscribe to him or something.
Thank you. Yeah, we'll, we'll just break for five minutes, Ellie.
You were going to, one time, maybe talk to different management companies, or no, maybe you contacted anyone?
I've started that. I don't have any, I, I didn't line up any phone calls yet because I'm thinking I'd like to do it maybe at the end of a Monday, like we're doing this now, so if I scheduled.
Yeah, no, I was just curious.
Yeah.
And also, also the license, you know, you're gonna look into, maybe if we could get one directed from the state without maybe not have to get it from Grace.
Well, and I think that's the question that I think we wanna put on Mr. Hay, is if he has any.
I always wanted to talk about that, too. I contacted Grace, uh, over this last week, just to talk to her, because I never knew him like you guys do, just to find out his point of view on where he's at, you know. And, well, and, and I'll talk a little bit, I'll tell everybody, too. I don't wanna do it, play that stupid.
Okay.
But, uh, so.
Just this past week, you talked about it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, I wanted to know where he's at.
Absolutely.
And, you know, I don't know, maybe if we could continue to work with him or not, maybe we don't want to. I, I don't know. See, you know a lot more than I do about all this, and so does I, but.
Well, my personal opinion on that is that he signed a lease, and it's not up yet, and.
It's up in June, six thousand this year. And what he told me originally, hadn't been paying rent, is that, he said, we hadn't been keeping the home up to compliance on, on some of the, uh, facility stuff, and he's had a fear that if they would get, uh, the, uh, inspectors come in, they could get, they could get fined, and that's what that's held back for, because of the roof licking, because of other things, and that was, now, now, I don't know.
I'd like to see that it's put in an escrow account, because I'd like to verify that one.
Well, but that's what I've been told. I just wanna tell you where else.
I know. I understand.
And I'll tell, I'll tell, I don't wanna.
No, that's fine.
Well, I, I'm, well, no, I should wait till he's here or something, because, because.
Well, no, this is all preliminary to if we're gonna call our attorney.
Yeah, I'll do. Like it, uh, because if we could continue, first of all, his lease runs out next year, like June. I, he could, I said, would he still want to possibly work with us, because he has, he has license. If we could just continue to work with him, and we could, it would take off a lot of this. Have to buy it from it, get a new manager, and then employees, when they get to stay on, with new management, all those concerns.
But my question is, if you wanted us to, to buy, bail out his debt, then why would he want to stay? Like, what, how do you have both?
I don't think he wants us to bail out his debt right now. He would, he told me, he would, uh, if we could kind of agree to, could, ensure to the community that for the next year at least, we are, we ain't gonna have no fear of closing. Because he said if he gets a big violation, he could maybe close and turn it over to the state, and that's, and that's why, that's where, but, but if we work with, make, deal with him, make, make an assurance that we can support him, possibly financially in some way, that he wouldn't, we, we're, no, we're not gonna pose, for, you know, until his lease runs out next year. That's the only issue.
Right, but we are supporting him financially. I mean, we've done, we did a half a million dollars in renovations.
Yeah, but that's our facility.
I'm not sick, but I think that is.
But the hundred twenty thousand also is going to fix it. We own the earth home, so that ain't, that ain't like we said, that's his business.
Well.
We're subsidizing what we own, in fact.
But, but when you're paying people's grease traps to be prompted, that's part of his.
Well, that, that's, that's a point. You got a good point there on what, who has a response on what the, uh.
Well, and I mean, if you talk.
The leaseholder responsibility versus us on when it comes to the, uh, facility.
And I've talked to, to several other nursing home operators, and they're not getting, I mean, if, if they're not a nonprofit, if they're a for-profit company, they have to pay their property taxes. You know, they have to pay their own insurance. We pay those things. So, it is subsidizing some of those.
Yeah, we are. I know, I know.
Yeah.
But I'm just saying, I just want to keep the thing open, is what I'm kind of doing.
I understand that.
And we want, if we can give some assurance to our community, employees, and residents.
I've had a lot of.
That, that would be, you get some stability here, and maybe, you know, along the way, it won't work out, we'll have to get a new management outfit. But for the ti, short term, I was just wanting to see where he's doing. How are you doing, John?
I'm good.
Good. I was just telling Alexis, and I'm about to do her, I talked to Grace this last week on, uh, where he stands in this whole nursing home issue, and, uh, he would still continue. My concern is, of course, we don't want it to shut down, and, uh, and he's not for closing, but he, his, what he's told me now is that, uh, if there would be a penalty or a fine, it's coming there, inspectors coming there, say the roof's leaking, which it is when it rains, and we could get a major fine for that, he's maybe at the point where he would, uh, go to the county state and give it, turn it over to them. And I don't wanna see that happen. So, I said, well, what could we?
That'd actually benefit us, though.
Yep, well, it could. We don't want to see it shut down. You wanna get it to.
Well, the state's not gonna just come in and shut it down, unless there's some.
Well, they're, they're gonna try to buy a management outfit like you do at other places. But then, how, what would that, would that be out of our control, or would that be all up to the state's control? And that's where I'm at. And I'm not saying maybe that'd be bad. I'm just, I don't want all this uncertainty, which is making a lot of people anxious up at the.
But I think it needs to be clarified that the uncertainty came from that end, not our end. We signed a three-year lease.
Yeah.
Okay? Regardless of what is in that lease, we signed it. And it was the administration's choice to say that they were unhappy there and wanted to sell out and felt that things were being threatened enough to be closing financially, et cetera, et cetera. That did not come from our board. It did not even come from a, anyone that has anything to do with the nursing home outside of his administration and his paid personnel, so.
Well, you may be right. I'm just saying now, I contacted him, but he's considered still maybe wanting to work with us. Now, maybe we'd have to renegotiate.
I guess I'm just.
Specific to this, and I know you're probably right, that he's in the wrong, and.
No, 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 that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying I'm confused, because if I own a business and I'm running it, and someone is my landlord, and I tell them that I want them to buy me out, I want, he has already told his landlord that he wants us to pay him to take it over for, in, in whatever capacity. I guess I'm just confused. How do you wanna stay and go at the same time?
Well, I talked to him. He's sounding like he possibly would be willing to still continue to run, operate.
Well, then he's in a lease. I mean, that, that's the.
Well, for a year, and then we're, then we'd, definitely something's gonna happen in next June, because the lease comes up. Either we keep him on, or we get somebody new, or we shut the doors down. One of the three.
Well, I don't think it needs to shut down if the proper person is running it, but.
But we gotta find new people, and then we'd have to give Grace a license, probably, which we can determine we don't have to. And then we have to pay him off, and we have to get a new management outfit, and are they gonna keep on?
But we don't owe him anything, is what I'm saying. We don't owe him any money. He owes us money.
I know. He owes us rent, and he counts payables like three-hundred thousand dollars. I'm not saying we're wrong, Alexis. I'm just saying I wanna keep it open, and wanna deal with whoever to keep it open. And Grace is in the picture, obviously. He's operating it out, and, uh.
Can, can we call Mr. Hay? He's available?
Yes, yes.
I will, I will enter, or I will, uh, motion to enter executive session. Um, I move to recess into executive session for forty-five minutes.
Yeah, I guess. I don't know how much you wanna talk to him about.
Uh, let's do forty-five minutes. For the purpose of discussing, uh, the nursing home license acquisition for Lincoln Park Manor with, oh, pursuant to KSA 754319 2B. Number two, for consultation with an attorney for the public body or agency who'd be being privileged in the attorney-client relationship.
Do you think we wanna do forty-five minutes, or should we do thirty, and then if we need more?
That's.
That's where.
I'll amend that.
We're on the clock.
That's fine.
With him.
Right, but I just figured if he hangs up, we still have our attorney. We can.
Well, yeah, yeah. I mean, we can stay in executive session if he hangs up.
Yes, that's what I was assuming, but, um, okay, so, but I'll amend it to say thirty minutes, please, Dawn. And with, um, the county attorney and the commission and the, um, county clerk. Well, I guess, is that okay, though? Because we're, you're our attorney, but not necessarily hers, right? So, edit, please, to just say the Board of County Commissioners and the county attorney and the, the paid attorney from, uh, contract attorney from Topeka, Mr. Hay. To reconvene in the basement meeting room of the courthouse.
Is that it?
Yes.
I, I'll second.
There's been motion, seconded, to enter the executive session for thirty minutes. Any further discussion? If not, those in favor vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. None opposed?
Can you press the button?
Just turn it off, then, silverback.
Yes, can I speak to Dick Hay, please? Thank you.
Office, uh, security, of, of what you would.
We can.
What you maybe wanna do with, uh.
We've been dealing with tax cell stuff for about the last three weeks, so, let's check it next week.
You can carry a three-fifty seven Magnum in your purse. Do you have a three-fifty seven Magnum in your purse?
We have pepper spray.
Everybody defending themselves. Okay, one question for you is, you were going to come and see us before you fell ill about the.
Yeah, I was gonna come next week, because you were so stacked this week.
I know, and I just wanted to make sure we follow up on that.
Yeah, I have, Katie's at her sixth month, so I was just gonna come next month.
It's for lives issues, okay.
Yeah, and bring everything. So, yeah, I'm gonna schedule a time with Dawn, and I'll be here next month, next, next Monday, so we can talk all about that. Okay, let me get me lunch.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dawn, for these applications you gave me, did each one of us get one, a set, to take home?
Yeah, but the HR, the HRs, we all got one.
I have another one for you guys. Hannah said it's one of the people that are indeed, so on the backside in the paperclip are the people that applied on Indeed that have not turned in their applications. So, one of those belongs to one of those. But I went ahead and included them, even though they haven't officially applied.
Thank you.
So, this Thursday, we meet, right, Dawn?
Yes.
Obviously, ten. Glad Alexis told me. I forgot about, after the month, yeah.
Yes, um.
More papers. Are we done, or?
So.
We gotta get Tim.
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
I moved to approve the six-month wage increase for Tim Line in the highway department. That's not on here. I'm sorry. I don't know the, the wage, just.
Uh, fifty cents.
Fifty cents, he gets an increase.
Increase fifty cents.
I was going to say the dollar amount, though. I don't know what it is. So, fifty cents increase.
I'll second.
Oh, sorry.
We have a motion and a second on the table for the wage increase for six months for Tim Line at fifty cents. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Where is that?
None opposed. Motion carried.
No, I need the evaluation for Tim.
Oh, there you go. So, do you want to schedule about an hour? Do we have anything on the agenda for next week?
I think so, yes, but I hope it won't all come to the top of my head.
So, we have an interview at twelve-thirty, though.
Yes.
So, we need to make sure we get everything done before then. So we need to make sure we get everything done before then. So let's wait on the Highway Department to, for one more week. And we will do that on April eighth. I think we need about an hour to make sure.
We're gonna start at eleven for interviews Thursday, right?
Yeah.
Yes. So we have an hour on Thursday to do our accounts payable and our payroll. Then we'll have two, two interviews. Then the following Monday, twelve-thirty, we have an interview.
Okay.
And so we'll need to do everything we need to do, or do a lot of that before then, cause we don't know how long that'll be.
Right.
And then, but to go through the actual department, the Highway Department evaluations, we need an executive session, so I would say an hour on the eighth. And.
Oh, you got on the Highway Department one, so.
Yeah, we just, we just.
Oh, turn a bit, okay, yeah.
We'll get those back on the eighth and we'll look at those.
Sure, we could, yeah. I'll keep that around, that's for my.
Yes, that's your, yeah, your minutes.
When do you guys want to go back to eight, two, or whatever? Are we changing the time when we do? Cause we do have people calling to get on the urgent waiting. And then Ladona, did I stick that note on there about Ladona? Maybe I did, I probably stuck it on somebody in my, um, Ladona said the um, she had the twenty-second and then the next week of time for um,
What's that?
Doing the Board of Health, but that would be into May and I didn't know.
It would be the twenty-ninth of April, would be the, after the twenty-second. Can we do it then?
No, cause she's, the only, she had two dates available, but she's not, already got a meeting or something to go to.
So it would be the twenty-second or May sixth?
Yes, and the twenty-second, then she called back and she had a meeting, so it will be that May, but I don't know what hours to set, because I don't know what you guys intend to, but, what your meeting times are. Normally we've changed back to.
Oh, well, we'll be, we'll be meeting that.
I don't really care what you guys do.
Well, I think we have a interview that.
We got, April first is next Monday.
Yes, unfortunately.
I can stop and, and see.
They might still be ongoing after the.
Cause Al Joe was a teacher before.
They, I just did mine per individually with him, so if it's the same guy, I know I grew up around him.
Okay, that's Craig Wolford.
Oh, Craig.
Well, that, he's kind of.
Oh, Craig, oh, Craig.
This is the interview, what, what to do about it, principal, superintendent.
Last time was a secret.
Well, you'd be a good input for.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll stop.
Okay, because that's where, yeah, they're, you know, getting the superintendent.
Remind me next week, Dawn.
To.
To.
To stop in after.
Superintendent.
After the interview on April first.
On my, April first, uh, the, they're getting a group of people together to interview for.
But we'll be interviewing twelve-thirty and they're starting at one, so they'll hopefully still be ongoing when we're done.
And Al Joe would be very good at that, cause he's been involved with that before and that'll, the ins and outs of the USD two ninety-eight.
Excuse me.
So, when are we returning hours?
My suggestion would be we wait till May, but.
Yes.
Probably after you, I.
I, I would rather.
Absolutely.
And do we wanna do eight or do you, I mean, do you?
I don't, it doesn't.
I like it this time, but some people.
I do too, I do too.
Later because I, I just could do a little more and more and, but, but.
Doesn't matter to me, I, I guess it doesn't matter.
Right now, ten, ten.
Harvest, I may leave.
Yeah, when it gets to harvest.
We can, we can change, I mean, we, we kinda will know when that's happening, at least a week or two before, we can change the meeting time, but let's just stick with ten.
Gets to harvest, but I would keep it at ten.
Okay.
I like it. Now, I don't know, do you like it? You'd probably like it earlier to eight, eight.
I.
She's here, any.
I don't care, so, yeah.
Let's stick to ten and if, if farming comes into play, we'll change it then.
Especially June and July, June, fruits and harvest and wheat and.
Let's do that.
Plant, plant heavy duty.
You probably need the time anyway.
It helps me, it helps me get out of the house in the morning.
You got four children you gotta deal with.
Okay, so the Board of Health meeting on May sixth.
Yeah.
Do you wanna be for your regular meeting or after your?
What, the health board meeting?
For the Board of Health. That'd be that one with Ladona.
It'd be the annual.
I, I wanna do it at nine o'clock.
Sure, that sounds great. We'll put an hour, an hour in.
Okay. May sixth.
So on the sixth of May at our regular Monday meeting, we'll just start an hour early because what we'll have is a Board of Health meeting, which is technically an open meeting anyhow. But it, it's an annual.
With Ladona.
Ladona and, and the hospital.
Just remind me, that's an hour earlier, so I don't.
I'll announce it the day, the day.
Well, and I'll try to put it on the, on the agenda as well now, so, okay. So I will let Ladona know so that she can get that scheduled. And then Alexis, uh, Joanne had been trying to reach you from the big Citizen State Bank, but if you're gonna sign our checks, which we've already got you on our check, you have to stop and sign their signature card.
Oh, there's, so, um, if you could stop over there today.
And do that, that would be great.
Yes, and.
We didn't think about it.
That's fine. I had requested the road and bridge supervisor job description just to be brought to the table again. We really need to discuss this. We don't necessarily have to do it today, but um, I think we need to rethink a little bit of our structure as far as when Bob was answering questions, he was doing everything. He was reporting to all the sites, coming back, you know, taking all of the complaints. I think we need to reevaluate that, the structure that we have there as far as.
Well, would you suggest changing? Not that I'm against anything, I'm just curious.
I guess the one, the one thing that's gonna make a difference is that we're probably not, we're, we'll probably not be able to hire anyone that has as much knowledge of every county road and structure.
Oh, internally, I, I.
You know, and be able to operate the equipment and be able to supervise a building and, I mean, that's just not gonna happen again, I don't think.
Right.
You know, so I think there's going to have to be some, some changes and maybe we're going to have to go to, to multiple supervisors and just give them an extra quarter or something to.
Well, I, what I was going to talk about a little bit is, you know, right now, there was a consolidation. We created a Public Works, which we don't really have Public Works, because in a lot of places, Public Works includes if you do your own water system or if you do your own electrical system in a grid, then you're the Public Works Director over that. So basically what happened was they took the Highway Department and put the landfill and the noxious weed under that to create Public Works. My concern with that is, nothing has changed. The, the administration of those departments are still department heads. We didn't take away money from them, so we didn't demote them. We actually put a position over them, which really doesn't do any oversight. So I, I'm a little concerned about that.
But let me tell you why that was done. Because that was done because we were needing the Highway Department to uh, haul trash, I mean, they were hauling the trash and they were uh.
The employees from the Highway Department were working for those departments.
And then, and, and then the other way, we could pull a Highway Department to put in the landfill or the.
And not have the payback between budgets.
So we were trying to, we, we tried to do that and that way they were integrated.
Integrated employees for different tasks.
Yes, yes, we integrated the employees, not anyone, and then, of course, we had a guy that was spraying weeds in the summertime and we put that into the east side, one of the Highway guys on the east side of the county is doing the spraying now, so we didn't have to hire that extra guy in the summertime. So that's, that's kind of the gist of what it's, it wasn't done to, uh, to demote those guys or anything. It was just to make use of our employees.
Since we're talking about this too, we need to maybe, to turn, I don't know, maybe you guys do know, I don't understand Michael's uh, involved, oh, is he the over, is he the over boss over the Highway Department Supervisor over Bob when he was there?
Yeah.
Is he? And is, so does he have direct control over him and say so? I mean, I'm not, I, I'm just curious.
That was, that was another thing that, when, when we did that, Michael was young and didn't have a lot of ex, I mean, he had quite a little experience in the county and, and we pulled in Bob because he knew all the roads and, and we just felt that that would be, and Bob seemed to have a good working relationship with men.
Sure.
And when you promote within, sometimes people have resentment.
Right.
And we, we felt that there might be some resentment, cause Michael wasn't the seniority person on the totem, well, I've been there long, you know. And so that was one of the reasons. Michael had the ability to do the, the.
Do the job.
Do the, no, the IT.
The technology.
We didn't have that before and, and we were, we were to a point where we had to have somebody do the technology.
Well, I'm just curious.
So those are kind of the reasons that, that that stuff was done.
So are we gonna have Michael then? Is, and does he then give orders to these guys or kinda just lets the roads, have a road supervisor operate on his own and Michael doesn't do nothing or does Michael direct them? See, I'm, I'm, people even ask me, well, how does Michael fit in in this whole picture? Does he tell them what to do or they just do what they know what, they know what to do and Michael doesn't tell them what to do? You know, I'm confused on that.
Well, Bob usually, Bob usually gave the work orders.
Okay.
And uh, I'm not sure there was a lot of communication between Michael and Bob at times, you know. But I think Michael pretty much let Bob run the employees, tell them what to do.
Okay.
You know, and if something came up, Michael would visit with Bob or tell Bob, hey, this needs to be done, you know. But I think Bob was really calling most of the shots on what road was gravelled and what culvert was fixed and what was done.
So now if we get a new highway supervisor or a bridge supervisor, Michael may have to have a little more involvement, because this person we get, like you said, didn't, wouldn't have Bob's knowledge.
And I think, I think Michael needs to be involved in the interviews of this person too, cause it's gotta be somebody that he can work with or work, will work under him.
Technically, with the hierarchy, Michael should be the one doing the interview.
Yeah, probably.
Employing the people. Well, and that's where the confusion was always at.
Yeah.
Was, because according to that hierarchy, he's responsible for that person, then he needs to be responsible and then he's responsible to you guys.
So you said then Michael should be interviewing the Highway Department people, huh? Or the super road supervisor, not, not us?
Well, this is my concern, okay, so it was just explained that the reason why we created the Public Works Director was so that we could do interdepartment budgetary things. It was basically to be able to shift around, like you said, the employees and the money. Okay, so it really is not about the superstructure of the administration.
No, it wasn't.
There's my concern. Michael voiced his own opinion and his own stance that he will not be working more than forty hours. I believe that we need to have a position that is management, boots on the ground, more than forty hours. So what you do is you pay enough of a salary that they are exempt from overtime and you expect them to put in kind of a fifty-hour week. You know, we talked about this a little bit with EMS, um, Mr. Uh, I can't remember. No, and on the corner there, when he was.
Alat.
Alat. He was expressing that when he was hired on, he was assuming that he was gonna get forty hours, forty-eight hours a week, okay? I think when we restructure this a little bit, we need to have a boots-on-the-ground manager that gets paid enough, that we know and can expect fifty hours. It's, this is not a forty-hour-a-week job, clock in and clock out. If that's what Michael wants, then this isn't really the position that we're trying to, to, to put in charge of all of this department and two million dollars.
You're, you've got a good point, Alexis, but once we reach that threshold, we've got a lot of other department heads that are gonna want that much money too.
Well, I think it depends, but let's look at the, but let's look at the budget, though.
I, 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 that's what I'm saying.
Versus a half a million.
I'm sorry.
I know what you're saying.
You know, cause we got in trouble with that, Dawn, right? Raising salaries.
Yes, cause you raised some employee salaries.
Raise one and they're better, you know, they'll say you discriminate against them.
Well, but here's the thing, if we wanna do what's right for the county, that's money well spent, in my opinion. When you're, when you're creating a position that's boots on the ground and you are not going to clock out at forty hours and walk away. If that's what someone wants to do, that's not truly upper management, two-million-dollar material, okay?
Or would we better off paying hourly wage and paying overtime?
And I don't think so, because you want someone who wants to know that that job is getting done. You know, i- if they're just gonna clock in to get paid, that's a different type of person than someone that wants control and management over everything to streamline it. You know, i- if, if we're gonna be hiring people in positions that say, I'm not doing anything more than my bare minimum, then that's a reflection on their pay. So when we up their pay, it's, as of, I think over the executive, fifty-five thousand.
Responsibility, what you're saying. And they should be act more responsible, because they're getting a higher position, more money. And they shouldn't be, yeah, I know what you're saying, but.
But fifty-five thousand.
For a two-million-dollar budget is what we're talking about, though, you know.
But we're also talking about a eight-million-dollar budget too.
I understand where you're coming from with that, but to have more people paid less who do less is more expensive than to have less people paid more who do more.
Right, if they're good employees.
Yeah, if they're dedicated. See, some people maybe are dedicated, no, I'm not saying anything.
Well, was anyone, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm pleasantly surprised at the quality of applicants that we've had in the last couple of job decisions, so.
Yeah.
You know, it, there's a reflection there on whether or not we're going to adequately fund those positions to expect more.
They're a long ways from fifty-five thousand.
You mean for a road supervisor or?
For, for the, what their, what their job looks like. I mean, that wage, unfortunately, in this county is extremely high.
Well, I think this is a serious job.
I, I don't, I, 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 I would like to pay people as much as I can.
Yeah.
But the reality is, we've got a county to run and we're basically at eight million. Now, how are we gonna divide that money up? If you're going to do that to the Highway Department, you're gonna have to pull from some other department. Basically, to get that extra money.
Well, I personally think the Public Works Director and Road Supervisor job is the same job. You can have one person doing that job, because what you just said was that you wanted someone on the IT side and on the experience side. When you pay enough, that person's gonna put in those fifty hours who has knowledge for both. And so if someone else wants to just clock in for their forty hours, there are ways we can accommodate that.
Driving to those sites to make sure that that work is being done.
But you know what I found out? Well, I, I had a little conversation with the, the Secretary of the Department. The way Bob was doing it, which is his, that's the way he had established over his term, every time a call came in, he was reporting to that site. No shovel, no, and I'm not asking an eighty-year-old man to have a shovel, I'm just saying, no shovel, no men, no equipment, okay?
He was evaluating, he was evaluating this, the call.
Right, but we can, we can capitalize on the techno, like, the technology that we have in order to quit spending man-hours and time doing that sort of thing. You know, if we're going to expect that every motor grader is in charge of his route, they should be reporting the scenario when they get a phone call. The Secretary told me that not only would she call Bob, he would go out on the scene personally, but then she'd also call the blade operator, who either hadn't noticed it yet or had already turned it in or was gonna go look at it too. So now we're paying two people to show up to evaluate it, you know. If we don't have enough communication with each person on his route to be able to assess and then give a phone call to the supervisor, who then, in my opinion, who then should organize and orchestrate and facilitate the fixing end of it, not just the assessment. You know, we get, we're getting a lot of assessments done here that we're paying for that never go anywhere, because it's all in one person's tablet. That's why the utilization of the three-one-one program would allow, if I'm a blade operator, I can pull that up and say, oh, I forgot that this road was reported, that there's a, there's a flag missing. Why can't that person not go do that themselves? We don't need to call a supervisor to come and put a flag out, which we were doing.
Don't need the employee entering it into the tablet that there's a flag down. I mean, put the damn flag out.
But then why isn't it getting done?
I don't know, I don't know, but we had an example of that.
Back to management.
That goes, that was back to management, they were typing all this stuff in, which was jobs that they were supposed to be doing, but they didn't do it. They just typed them in.
So then that gives the supervisor a perfect opportunity to say, excuse me, Randy, you put this, this and this in here, why didn't you do it yourself? Don't, don't give me, don't delegate responsibilities to me, I'm your supervisor. That's the kind of.
Coordination has to be better.
Exactly, exactly.
Better coordination. I think Michael today came in and sounded like too, he was wanting to get with the three-one-one and like when we shared and offered, offered to uh, drive around and maybe uh, take pictures with the uh, of, of this stuff and, and Michael said too, he, he's working, I think, to get into the electronic age more with this stuff, get it reported on the system and then, you know, it takes time to, to get them to convert to using this stuff, but we need to reemphasize to keep.
But there also has to be.
Now Bob was, you know, eighty, he didn't wanna ask.
Right, he didn't, I understand that, I do understand that. It's overwhelming for some people, but I still think that we need to look at this position seriously and see, what are the benefits? What is the point of having a supervisor over the road and, road and bridge supervisor? What has?
Well, well, that's just, I was one.
At this point, it hasn't.
Could Michael be the, both? Or is that too overwhelming? Or if he was both, could he then have a guy under work in, wow, he was one Mr. Zacco today, but could he have a, a lead in, lead uh, lead, lead guys under him or foremen's under him? One guy foreman for the bridge, one for the uh, roads. And he's, and he's over both. Now, I don't know, you know, I don't know. You guys know better than I do, Al Joe, you better know how it works.
I say, I think you're right that, that we need a foreman uh, for the bridge and, and we probably need a foreman for the roads. Uh, you know, you get into the problem where you have these ten districts or.
Yeah.
Yes, routes.
Ten districts, you know, and to have one of those guys in that district to be over those road barriers, that's not practical, because he's got a job to do himself, you know.
Right.
You know, that's, you know, we did have at one time, we did have a, a lead truck driver that kinda made sure the guys got their trucks going and they got to the, the place and we kinda, that kind of uh, didn't, it worked for a while and then as people get too, you know.
Do you think we should work under our existing system, like Michael stays where he's at and we just get another person replace Bob and uh?
I, I, I don't think you can find anybody, cause nobody's gonna have that kind of experience. I don't think they can do that. I just don't think they can do. I just don't think they can do that, I, they just don't have the expertise, they haven't built roads for.
So, what do we do to replace Bob, then?
Well, I think that's where we're at, you know, do you, do you break it down now? You know, I think Michael needs to be on this, what does he need, what does he need underneath him?
Well, I, I'm just, I'm, I'm gonna go back to what I said, if, if this person is voicing to the commission that they're not willing to put in a dime. More than forty hours, even at this point, he would be getting paid overtime, so if that's not the stance of the position that we have in charge, then we need to rethink the structure.
Well, maybe we need to discuss that with him more again, saying, you know, Michael, we need to, you're gonna require you to do maybe more than forty hours. And maybe we can boost his pay, uh, but you have a little more responsibility, now Bob's gone, so you're gonna have more responsibility to oversee the. What Bob used to do, you may have to do it, but maybe we can have him have helpers, maybe, and he may have to do fifty hours, maybe not all the time, but if it's busy. And there's a major, say, a major, uh, big flood and washouts of bridges and roads, he may have to put in sixty. He might have to put in a lot more hours, because there's, there's, you know, there's.
Exactly right.
Uh, emergency work or something, then he may have to show up, um, but the regular week, maybe do forty, you know, if everything's going good. But he had, but he shouldn't just say, well, it's forty, no matter what, I'm going home, that ain't.
Well, we have positions for that, we have positions for that, we pay that.
Well, maybe we could talk to Michael about that, saying, you, you gotta do more than forty, Michael, but maybe we can increase pay, and have him more responsibility, cause he's gonna. Bob's not here, so he's gonna have to help out with that, over unmanagement.
Well, I guess what I'm seeing is, you know, I had asked Michael point-blank at the table, what he spends ninety percent of his time doing, and it's office. Okay, it's office administration, so we need to look at, do we have an office administrator, or do we have a boots-on-the-ground working foreman? Who is the department head, there's a di, there's a big difference there.
Now, I think he could be both, Dawn, don't you, you don't have to be one of those.
I don't think anyone would be both without a pay increase.
Well, maybe we can discuss that.
That's ample.
But, but you, Aljo, you know, you've been here a long time and know how this operates, and, uh, with Bob gone now, uh. I, I just wanna make sure these, our regular workers are managed out here, out on the.
I think that's where we're at, definitely.
Are they managed, do they know what to do from day to day, uh, uh?
They're kinda on their own, I think.
Are they on their own, well, that's just it, and do they, and, and a lot of them, I think.
And, and we have, probably, probably more than half of them are doing a good job.
Yeah.
We got a few, we got a few of them that are, and I don't think it's as bad as it used to be, sleeping in the graders and doing things like that.
Well, I drove around yesterday, cleared out Southwest.
We have some that are pretty conscientious, I think, and are very, very astute at what they're doing, I mean, and some of them.
Art and learning.
Well, yeah.
They're learning.
Well, I think we have a few that are great operators at whatever they're doing, but they don't want to be management, you know, that's a personality thing. So, there's, there's limited ways that we can, there's limited ways that we can promote with, promote in. Um, but we also wanna be careful not to promote people who don't have the particular technique that we want spread, as far as. You know, the, the habits and whatnot to get into.
Well, we'll have to discuss this more, I guess.
I, I.
But, but are we, so, are we supposed to look this over and, uh, research and see if we like this, or what?
Right, one of the, one of the, um, notes I made is essential functions. See, we have basically monitor work, and monitor work, and interview, and hire, and train, and da-da-da-da-da. But as far as, you know, pres, uh, assist office manager with maintenance rec, maintenance records, develops and maintains a special project list. These things have not been brought to the table very often, for us to see, and not that I want to see every little thing that's going on. But you have to have someone who wants a comprehensive plan on paper, and that should definitely be what we consider in this position. And just like Aljo mentioned, work orders, yeah, we need to know who's giving those work orders and to which groups. You know, if we have a Public Works Director and we have a Road and Bridge Supervisor as well, does the Road and Bridge Supervisor only give out culvert work orders? Does the Public Works Director give out the work orders for tree trimming, or, you know, none of that has really been established, and I think that's where you have that crossover between. Someone who's been here a really long time and just kind of called it as he saw it, versus someone who's been trying to organize things.
Yeah.
In the computer, you know.
Thursday, right, ten o'clock.
Yes, the meeting will be.
Thursday at ten?
Thursday, end of the month, Thursday, March twenty-eighth at ten AM, and I guess.
And I think these issues are fine, except, we don't wanna overwhelm someone, would have to overload them with so much at once. I think maybe they could work into the job to get down to the details and things like that, you know what I'm saying?
Well, some people wanna work, and they wanna work more than whatever it takes, or do what it takes.
No, I know, but they need to do.